All right, the meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll?
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Daniel Bailey.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Thank you.
And moving on to our next item in business, since there are no minutes to approve, are there, moving on to our disclosures, Commissioner Winchester.
I was absent from four cases heard on the 11th, so I won't be participating in the consent agenda. Other than that, no disclosures.
Thank you. Commissioner Gardner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't present at a few meetings, um, and won't be voting on case 2020-037, 2020-029, 2020-043 on the consent agenda.
Uh, Commissioner Krishna.
Uh, no disclosures, except that I was, um, recused for case 2020-0036.
Commissioner Looney.
I was, uh, recused on, um, on the consent agenda, item 2020-0043, this Bernard Corridor Plan, um, but otherwise for the four public hearings today, I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Nothing to disclose.
All right, just as a double check, did I miss anyone? All right, I don't think so. All right, is there a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda? Type into the chat if there is a motion. Move by Commissioner Krishna, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Strike, just as a reminder to you all, as you, uh, type in your, or as you go and do your oral votes, that, uh, we will take care of all the ones of which you've been disclosed and were absent from, and then we'll tally up the votes afterwards. Um, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Type now if you have any objections. Seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to public hearing case G1, is there a motion to postpone? A motion to postpone case 2020-0038 by Commissioner Strike, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Krishna, any objection? Seeing no objection, that case is postponed. Moving on to case 2020-0022, staff, can we have the report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for an amendment to de facto conditional use for a utility substation owned and operated by Municipal Light and Power, uh, MLNP, located at 201 East Second Avenue in downtown Anchorage. The existing substation at this site was developed in the late 1960s and is considered a de facto conditional use because it was established prior to current zoning regulations. The substation has been out of commission in recent years due to its age and obsolete equipment. The electricity supply for the downtown area currently passes through Substation 9A, which is located north of the intersection of West Second Avenue and H Street. Substation 9A is located within leased land owned by the Alaska Railroad. The Alaska Railroad would like to construct a housing development within this parcel, which is prompting MLNP to find an alternative site to route downtown's electrical supply through. Given that Substation 3 is already owned by MLNP and is capable of accommodating the necessary equipment, the choice was made to upgrade the, upgrade the existing equipment at this site and abandon Substation 9A. Pending approval of this conditional use amendment, construction at this site is likely to begin in the summer of 2020. The Planning Department has reviewed the application for compliance with old Title 21 and presents the following findings. Uh, for general standards for conditional use approval, for standard A, uh, we believe the standard is met. Uh, the petition site is classified as other open space and park or natural area per the 2040 Land Use Plan, Land Use Plan map. Park open space per the 2007 Anchorage Downtown Comprehensive Plan Downtown District diagram. The petition site also appears to be classified as existing parks or other lands currently used as parks in the 2006 Anchorage Bowl Park Natural Resource and Recreation Facility Plan. It is unclear to revealing staff exactly why this parcel was classified in this manner, considering this parcel was developed to serve as a utility substation in the 1960s and will continue to be under the ownership of MLNP in, into the foreseeable future. Based upon comments received by the Parks and Recreation Department, there appears to be an agreement between MLNP and Parks and Rec to split the maintenance of the property into respective areas. This agreement may explain the parcel's classification within the comprehensive plan. Any discrepancy between site maintenance responsibilities shall be resolved between MLNP and Parks and Rec outside of this conditional use request. Additionally, the proposed project is in compliance with the following policies and goals of applicable comprehensive plans. For Anchorage 2020, that would be policy 80. And the downtown comprehensive plan does not explicitly mention utilities, but, you know, having a reliable, efficient, and cost-effective supply of electricity to downtown is essential for its support, uh, to support its growth and revitalization. Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, uh, it's, uh, compatible with land use policy 5.1. Uh, for criteria B, we find that the criteria is met. The submitted site plan is compliant with all dimensional standards, uh, Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, that'd be chapter 4.0 subsection 170F, and chapter 4.0 subsection 170G. Uh, there are no use-specific standards for this proposed use, and off-street parking is not required in the B2C district. And visual enhancement landscaping will be installed in all applicable areas in accordance with, uh, Anchorage Municipal Code. For criteria C, the proposed use will be compatible with both existing and planned land uses in the surrounding area, and is consistent with the intent of the B2C district. This parcel is peripherally located in the B2C district, and as such, it is bordered by businesses held to similar land use standards. Surrounding land uses include office buildings, restaurants, pubs, parking lots, government facilities, parks, and hotels. For criteria D1, the criteria is met. At this location of the parcel, East Second Avenue is designated as a local street for the 2014 Official Streets and Highways Plan. Experiencing less than 2,000 average daily vehicle trips, uh, this facility will not be regularly staffed, so anticipated vehicular traffic at this site is low. MLNP staff will only be servicing the site periodically as needed. Additionally, pedestrian circulation should not be impacted, as the downtown area is developed with sidewalks and traffic control devices to accommodate safe pedestrian travel. For criteria D2, we believe the criteria is met. The proposed use will enhance the level of available public services in downtown. Having a reliable, efficient, and cost-effective supply of electricity in the downtown area will help to further facilitate its growth and revitalization. Downtown Anchorage is developed with several urban amenities. The streets are paved with curbs, uh, gutters, storm drains, sidewalks, and traffic control devices. Although the site is not accessible to the public, fixed route public transportation running at regular intervals is available within one block. And additionally, uh, it's important to note that the petition site is within the Anchorage Roads and Drainage Area, Building Safety Area, Park Service Area, and the Police and Fire Service Area. For criteria D3, be no air, water, or other forms of environmental pollution greater than permitted by code or result from the development of this utility substation. The new equipment installed at this location will be low noise generating, and the site will be fully screened with a 10-foot screening fence. The petitioner will be preserving as much mature vegetation on site as possible, and will be installing visual enhancement landscaping within applicable areas. For approval criteria D4, the criteria is met. The zoning land use in general area, land use will not change as a result of this use. Reasonable mitigation measures have been integrated into the site design and function to lessen the impacts to surrounding land uses. These measures include new asphalt paving to lessen debris tracked onto roadways, installing low noise generating equipment, and fully screening the site with both fencing and landscaping. And considering, uh, the, uh, review of the case by the Planning Department, the department recommends approval, subject to the conditions, uh, 1 and 2 listed on page 6 and 7 of the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Before we open up for questions, uh, it was pointed out, I forgot to, uh, state the public hearing procedure, so I'll go ahead and state that now. The procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission rules of procedure. Petitioners will receive 10 minutes. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes, and individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for the Commission's recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for appeal is required at the time of filing. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
I still can't hear anything. What's going on here?
Seems like there may be technical difficulties by someone on the end. Do we want to try to resolve those, or? Um, Commissioner Krishna, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I have a question for staff, which is, um, I didn't see this in the staff report, but I, maybe I missed it. I'm wondering if you could, um, describe the current setbacks from Second Avenue and, um, i-if they'll change at all as part of this proposed project?
Uh, through the Commission, the setbacks will not be changing through this project. Um, I believe the front setback within this district, uh, 10 feet.
Commissioner Looney.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I have a question, um, for the staff, maybe it'll, and go to the petitioner, but essentially, could you elaborate a little bit as far as the, uh, the impact or the, uh, the coordination with Barrow Park, which is just to the west of the site? Whether there's a shared access, or, or is it just shared maintenance, or, or what that's all about?
Uh, through the Chair, Commissioner Looney. So, the comments from Parks and Recreation Department are on page 43 of the staff packet, and it, there isn't any existing vehicular access from this parcel to Barrow Park, but it does appear, based upon the comments that Parks and Rec submitted, that there may be some underlying management agreement between the two parties to where certain areas of this lot are managed, uh, or are maintained by Parks and Rec, and then other areas with, uh, you know, of course, electrical equipment are maintained by MLNP. But, um, I, I haven't seen the actual agreement myself, so I can't speak to the specifics of it, but, uh, it does appear that there is some type of underlying management agreement, uh, between the two parties.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no other, oh, Commissioner Krishna.
Sorry, I just have a follow-up to my, my previous question, which is, you know, that it does appear to be pretty close to Second Avenue, so I'm wondering if you could just, um, give us the, the number of feet that the front set, for the front setback from Second Avenue that, that it is now?
Uh, through the Commission, I'm unclear on exactly what the exact dimension is there, but it doesn't appear that the footprint is moving any closer, uh, to Second Avenue. And I can also, uh, state that there is no encroachment within the required setback. I can follow up with that.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner? Is the petitioner on the line?
Casey Volk here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, uh, well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak here. Uh, my name is Casey Volk. I work with Travis Peterson Environmental, and I am representing Municipal Light and Power, uh, for Substation 3. Um, and I'll kind of just go through a quick narrative, a lot of it Ryan already explained, and, uh, if you guys have any further questions, feel free to ask. Uh, but, uh, Municipal Light and Power is requesting a conditional use approval for the proposed update to Substation 3 located at 201 East Second Avenue. Substation number 3 is an archaic 35KV, 4KV substation built in the late 1960s in response to the Great Alaskan Earthquake of 1964. In recent years, the 4KV system has been phased out, rendering the substation obsolete. Substation 9A currently services the downtown area. Substation 9A is a more modern 35KV, 12KV substation, but is located on leased Alaska Railroad land. The Alaska Railroad notified Municipal Light and Power that the Alaska Railroad will not renew the lease for Substation 9A because the Alaska Railroad is planning to build a housing project on the substation site. Therefore, MLNP will update the outdated equipment at Substation 3 with new 35KV, 12KV equipment to replace Substation 9A. The upgrade will allow MLNP to continue to provide reliable service to the downtown area when Substation 9A is taken offline. The project will incorporate updated safety features, including a new switchgear and new transformer, along with associated containment foundations, firewall, retaining wall, and new fencing. The upgraded substation will be fed via underground cable rather than overhead line, which will increase reliability and reduce visual impact. The current screening fence will also be updated with a new 10-foot fence to reduce the, the visual impact. MLNP found no viable alternatives to the proposed update. Substations generally fall into the category that, uh, something that no one wants in their backyard, therefore MLNP chose to update a pre-existing facility. This is the least disruptive and most cost-effective approach to provide the needed upgrades for the downtown area. The approval of this conditional use permit will allow MLNP Substation 3 to be upgraded to service the downtown area. When complete, the substation will be more efficient, reliable, and more visually appealing than the current substation. The project is scheduled to commence in July 2020 and be completed in the spring of 2021. Um, that's about all I have for this. If you guys have any questions for me, uh, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Volk. Commissioner Strike.
Thank you, and through the Chair. Um, two follow-on questions to questions previously asked by the Chair, by, um, previous Commissioners, and one has to do with the Parks and Recreation Agreement that I believe is already in place, and my question to you is, are you okay? Is MLNP fine with the, um, status quo agreement they have with the Parks and Rec regarding the access and maintained, maintaining access to the park?
Um, yes, but to my knowledge, they are. I know David Cyril, who is the representative, um, is planning on contacting the Parks and Rec Department, uh, on the side to resolve this matter. That way, everyone's on the same page, um, because it sounds like there is a little confusion on who is doing the maintenance. So, the plan is for MLNP and the Parks Department to, uh, get together and just make sure we're all on the same page, who's maintaining what.
As I understand it right now, there, the, there is no current access through your substation area to the park. In fact, it's basically fully wooded, so there would not be any current maintenance that I can foresee. I just didn't want to see an issue down the road where you get back into doing maintenance on behalf of the Parks and Rec in an area outside of your current footprint.
Yeah, I don't see, um, the, the current footprint should remain relatively the same. A lot of the upgrades are going to be within the fenced area. Um, there is a few sections outside the fenced up sta, the fenced area to the east, uh, that will be, um, updated, but again, that's away from Barrow Park, and there, there should never be access to Barrow Park from the utility substation.
That, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, thank you. And the second follow-on question regarding the, um, question by Chairperson Krishna was, this has to do with the fact that you are utilizing a grandfathered conditional, de facto conditional use permit, so to speak. You're coming in now with a substantially greater, I'm going to call it a substantially greater, substation than what was originally envisioned back in 1960 or in the 60s for this plat. So, the question I have, and this follows on to her question regarding setback, will, and this is a question both to you and to the staff, will the current, like, uh, the current code be adopted as opposed to anything that was previously grandfathered? Are we going to bring everything up to current standards and code regarding setbacks, um, et cetera? How do you phrase that then? Or, did you track my question?
Through the Chair, I can answer part of that for you, Commissioner Strike. Um, there, there are no conflicts with, uh, the underlying old Title 21, because this is a downtown district, um, with the proposed plan.
So, the current setback off of Second Avenue that is currently in place still meets today's code that has been subsequently approved since 1960?
Uh, that is correct, yeah. The placements of the utilities do not conflict with any setback requirements under current code. Or old Title 21, I should say.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, um, I don't think my question really relates to any of the approval criteria, but I noticed that the site is in seismic ground failure zone 5, um, and I was wondering just what MLNP's stance is on putting their infrastructure that serves all of downtown in an area that could get substantially damaged in a big earthquake.
Um, with that, uh, we'd have, I'd have to go to David Cyril with MLNP to follow up with that question. I don't want to, you know, say anything on behalf of MLP. I'm not sure what their thoughts are on that, um, but I'm more than happy to reach out to them and get that answer for you.
Yeah, I guess I'd be interested to hear what they have to say. I don't think, like I said, I don't think it affects the approval criteria for this request, but it would be of interest. Thanks.
Yeah, I can, uh, I will reach out to them tomorrow, and I can try to get that, an answer to you. Um, yeah, that'd be no problem.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions in the queue, um, just a question for staff, do we have anyone speaking on this matter from the public? Nope. Um, so the petitioner has 7 minutes and 20 seconds remaining for any rebuttal. Mr. Volk, if you would like to use any of your remaining time, you can do so now.
Uh, I believe, uh, I'm, I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Since the petitioner is over and there is no public testimony, what is the will of the body? Uh, Commissioner Anderson, would you like to state your motion for the record?
I am the matter of case 2020-0022, um, amendment to a de facto conditional use for utility substation, Substation number 3 within the B2C district. I move to approve, um, with the, uh, conditions on page 6 and 7 in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, yeah, I think that the proposed project makes an efficient use of an existing substation instead of acquiring, um, new property. It frees up land with an existing substation to allow residential development, which is in support of the 2040 Land Use Plan and other goals. Um, it appears to conform with the approval criteria, um, listed in the staff report, and there was no negative, um, public feedback or opposition to the request.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote.
Mr. Spinelli.
Yes.
Chair Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Strike.
Yes.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yep.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. O'Quinn.
Yes.
Ms. Krishna.
Yes.
Mr. Winchester.
Yes.
Thank you.
That item passes. Moving on to case 2020-0040, staff, can we have the report?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission is proposing to replace several conaxes and a shed with a new building addition to the homeless shelter. This will allow the internal layout alter to change, and the kitchen to be expanded. Uh, there will be no change in the number of people served by the shelter or the habilitative care facility on the same site. Uh, one public response was, uh, received from the public hearing notices mailed out, uh, 485 mailed. One came back, um, it's on page 68 and 69 of your packets. Um, the person commenting from the public opposed any changes to the site. The university area community council provided, uh, an email stating the changes to the site makes sense and that the community council does not object, um, to this conditional use amendment. Um, the Planning Department, um, reviewed the, uh, conditional use, uh, standards, um, for these, uh, for the conditional use amendment, and, uh, found that, uh, the amendment, uh, for this building addition meets all, um, all nine, uh, approval criteria and complies with, uh, Anchorage 2020 Policies 7 and 61. 61 is promoting the availability of supportive housing opportunities for the homeless and for persons with special needs. The Department also finds that, uh, the habilitative care, uh, use-specific standards, um, are met, um, and, uh, bringing characteristics of use into conformance. So, the Department's recommending approval of the application, subject to conditions of approval, 1 through 4 on pages 6 and 7 of your packet. Condition 3 is, uh, approval of a preliminary plat that's being handled separately and, uh, resolving a need for a parking reduction with the Traffic Department and, uh, Planning Department. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing no, oh, Commissioner Gardner.
Yes, thanks. Um, this may be just a basic question, but, um, I guess my question is, I wasn't clear if, exactly why it is we need an amendment to the conditional use approval, if the, if the kind of size of the program doesn't seem like it's going to be changing in any way. And, um, I guess, assuming we do need an amendment, would the conditional use end up reading differently in any material way from the, from the two examples that are in the back of the packet that are currently on file for this, um, site?
Uh, through the Chair, Mr. Gardner, uh, no, uh, the, uh, there's no, I mean, I guess the material change, okay, I'll begin again, I'm sorry. Um, the, uh, the amendment, uh, so when the, when the Commission approves the conditional use, um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's both the use of the property for, uh, something in the table that's deemed to require a conditional use approval from the Commission, but also, um, it's the exact site plan. And since these guys are, um, adding a, um, a building bump out, or, well, they're increasing the size of the building, which, uh, changes the site, even though they're not changing, uh, the, uh, number of, uh, people served by the, um, habilitative care facility and the homeless shelter, and they're not changing anything, um, uh- facility and the homeless shelter, and they're not changing anything, um, uh, about the program. They'll just have more kitchen space and, uh, some, some more indoor spaces for meeting rooms. Um, uh, it still technically requires this amendment for the commission to, uh, approve this, a building addition. Um, but otherwise, the site stays the same. And, uh, they're swapping the conaxes that they're using now for, um, an actual, uh, expansion of the, the building.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that, uh, that help, helpful background.
Seeing no other questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
Hi, yes. Um, this is Melissa Branch with Big City Engineers. I'm the petitioner's representative, and I have, um, Paul Barrow with Envision Architecture and Pastor John Lamentia from the mission. So, if there's any questions when we move forward, they're with me. Um, we've worked really closely with the municipality to review the 2011 approvals and, and what we're moving forward with. And as Frances stated, we are working to improve our support spaces and, and with that, a kind of a cleanup of the site, right? This, uh, bettering of the site plan with landscaping, pedestrian connections, um, removing of the conex trailers, so really a cleanup of the site and not an expansion of who's being served. Um, we did spend time working with the community and attending our community council meetings to get that feedback. Um, and with that, we have no objection to our conditions and are available to answer any questions the commission may have.
Any questions for the petitioner? I don't see any questions in the queue. Checking with staff, there is no public testimony on this item, correct?
Correct.
All right. Uh, petitioner, you have nine minutes and four seconds remaining for rebuttal.
I, I don't think there's anything we need to rebut. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, since we have heard from the petitioner and no members of the public wish to testify and the petitioner's made their closing comments, what is the Commissioner Gardner, would you like to state your motion for the record?
Sure, thanks. So, in case number 2020-0040, a conditional use amendment for a habilitative care facility and a homeless shelter in the PLI district, um, I would move to approve with the conditions of approval identified on pages six and seven of the staff packet.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. That is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I, I guess I find in general that this, um, meets the approval criteria for the amendment. And as a, as a basic matter, there's already a conditional use in place. There's no substantive change in any way that I think would reflect on the approval criteria from what existed and was approved before, with the exception that, um, this will largely just work to clean up the site a little bit, replacing conaxes with a, a building structure. Um, I'll note that the university area community council did not object to this amendment. Um, there was one written response opposing any change, but I think this change, um, if anything, just helps clean up the site. Um, and I guess I'll note as well that there is 10%, I think I signed here, of the, um, of the cost of the, of the changes would go towards bringing the site into further compliance with, um, current code.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
And Chair Bailey has voted yes.
That motion passes. Um, before this next item starts, I'm just going to take a quick five-minute bathroom break, um, and other members can do the same on their end, but we'll be back. All right, we're back in session. Uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda, case 2020 dash zero zero six nine. Mr. Hodges, can we receive the report?
Thank you. Matt Nuska Electric Association, MEA, is requesting a conditional use for the upgrade and expansion of the Justine Park Substation, an existing electoral substation at twenty-two, uh, 2401-8 Steffi Street in a CER six zoning district in Chugiak. The neighborhood is composed primarily of low-density single-family houses. MEA states the upgrade and expansion of the existing past facility will double the existing electrical load capacity to meet current and future needs the area it serves. A 2015 relocation feasibility study led MEA to the conclusion that the substation's existing location is the most suitable and least impactful site for the proposed expansion. MEA has been engaging the surrounding community regarding service needs for the area and its plans for the facility since approximately April 2014. Leading up to this conditional use request, MEA purchased adjacent Lot 93 of the Park subdivision and has moved the western lot line between Lot 93 and Lot One, Lot One being the existing site, thirty feet to the west through preliminary plat S12251. This expanded the available area for the site by now to nine thousand square feet, which was intended to provide more square, more space to meet minimum setback requirements and ensure the drainage remains on-site. MEA has also obtained a design variance for a twelve-foot fence to surround the proposed enlarged facility through Urban Design Commission Case 2020-0055. The proposed expansion represents a substantial enlargement of the existing facility. At approximately eight hundred square feet of concrete foundations, the existing facility operate, occupies a small portion of Lot One. The proposed facility would cover 5,948 square feet, which is approximately a 643.5% increase in area covered. Figures one and two on the staff report show the existing site and the proposed site respectively. Further site plan info can be found in the application. While MEA's proposed expansion project greatly improves the area's electrical infrastructure, it is achieving this through the construction of entirely new facility that replaces the older, much smaller substation. Uh, this case, or, uh, this site was subject, was a, subject of Planning and Zoning Commission Case 2013 dash one-five-nine previously, and it was, uh, that's for, uh, in existing, or, for expanding this facility and for conditional use to do so. It was denied at that point and was appealed to the Board of Adjustment, which was upheld. And the reasons for the denial primarily stemmed from the scale of the facility, uh, the, the buffering, or the lack of buffering and landscaping and some protections for the neighborhood. And this application is an entirely new application. Looking at agency comments, none of the reviewing agencies objected to the conditional use request. The municipality of Anchorage Traffic Department has commented that the proposed driveway for the facility must be paved per AMC 210709H12. Recommended, recommended condition of approval is for the applicant to provide a site plan showing these improvements. Uh, for public comments, the Birchwood Community Council submitted a letter citing several concerns over the proposed facility and also passed a resolution recently opposing the conditional use. Eight public comments were also submitted after the staff, sorry, staff report was finalized. All of these comments requested the commission deny the conditional use or delay the decision. And the resolution and the comments that were provided after the staff packet was finalized are available in supplementary packet number one. Looking at the approval criteria for conditional use, criterion one, this criterion is met. For the comprehensive plan, per the 2006 Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan Update, the proposed utility substation will be located within a residential land use designation that calls for up to one dwelling unit per acre. While the land use designation is residential, CER six is an implementing zoning district for this land use, and utility substations are allowed as a conditional use. The proposed facility also does not conflict with any of the goals or policies of the comprehensive plan, and in particular supports the following goal from page forty-three of the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan Update, quote, "provide public facilities and services that are located, that are located, designed, and maintained to accommodate current and future needs of the area in an effective, cost-efficient, and timely manner." Examining Title 21 and compliance with the code, twenty, section 210707O, neighborhood protection standards, through this conditional use request, Planning and Zoning Commission is authorized to, quote, "impose conditions that are necessary to reduce or minimize any potential adverse impacts on residential property," end quote. Criterion four, criteria four through seven address the potential impact-
Mr. Hodges, um, I just have a request online that if you could speak up a little bit, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So, criteria four through seven address the potential impacts of the facility to adjacent residential uses and discuss the proposed mitigation strategies. Section 211006O, dimensional standards, the proposed facility meets all dimensional standards, including minimum lot sizes, maximum lot coverage, and minimum setbacks. 211007O, development and design standards, the proposed facility meets or exceeds minimum landscape requirements and will provide additional screening through twelve-foot wood-sladed fence approved in case 2020 dash zero zero five five. Looking at federal and state regulations, the proposed facility does not appear to conflict with any state or federal regulations. Criterion two, this criterion is met. There are no use-specific standards for the CER six district. Per 211004OC1I, residential districts in Chugiak Eagle River are intended to accommodate utility substations, provided that the residential character of the neighborhood is maintained. Criterion three is met. The only use-specific standard relates to landscaping. AMC 210504OJ3B requires the following, requires the following of utility substations, quote, "The facility shall be designed and constructed to ensure visual and aesthetic compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. Compatibility may be achieved either by using similar architectural design and materials as buildings in the surrounding neighborhood or by screening the facility with L2 buffer landscaping. The proposed facility exceeds L2 landscaping requirements through a combination of natural vegetation retention, the provision of a side obscuring fence, and new landscape plantings." Criterion four, this criterion is also met. As figure two in the staff report shows, the proposed facility will occupy a substantial portion of Lot One. There will be noticeable visual impacts in the short term due to larger transmission lines and larger supportive structures. However, the screening and landscaping that is planned for this facility will reduce visual impacts significantly, especially after the tree plantings are matured to a height that obscures more of the facility. Criterion five, this criterion is met. The proposed facility will not limit, impair, or prevent any of the surrounding residential uses. Visual impacts are addressed in criterion four, and noise, vibration, traffic, and lighting impacts are discussed in criterion six. The Birchwood Community Council submitted comments that expressed concern over potential impacts to the water table, which would impair the use of surrounding properties residential use, given the reliance on wells and septic systems. However, the only water impacts from the proposed facility would be drainage due to snowmelt and stormwater runoff, all of which will be contained on-site. MEA will also be installing a secondary oil containment system to prevent water contamination as required by current electoral standards. Criterion six is met. Looking at traffic, the proposed facility is an unstaffed electrical substation and will generate very little traffic. For noise, the application includes a noise analysis of the substation completed by Travis Peters and Environmental Consulting Group in December 2019. The results show that the proposed substation will reproduce an hourly average of less than 65 decibels each lot line. Sixty decibels is about the volume of a normal conversation or an air conditioning unit. This conforms to AMC 1577060B14, which requires electrical substations to generate an hourly average noise level of under 65 decibels. So, given this, a recommendation, recommended condition of approval is for MEA to monitor noise levels post-construction and ensure the noise levels remain within the maximum set forth by code. Looking at vibration, vibration levels are analyzed and are expected to increase from about zero meters per second squared to point oh-three meters per second squared. The vibration reading of zero was taken at the fence line of the existing facility, about eighty-eight feet from the transformer, and the comparison vibration level of 0.03 meters per second squared was taken at the fence line of a substation similar to the proposed substation, and that was about 94 feet from the transformer. For a real-world comparison of this, based on the hand-armed vibration database, some items that register a vibration rate of up to point five meters per second squared include dental drills and small handheld sanders. Looking at vibration, a recommended condition of approval is for MEA to monitor the vibration levels of the facility and ensure they do not exceed point zero-three meters per second squared within or beyond 94 feet of the transformer. For lighting, lighting will consist of downward-facing LED fixtures pointed inward and placed a minimum thirty feet from each property line. Security lighting will be on at all times and provide just enough lighting for personnel to reach the electrical equipment safely. Maintenance lighting will only be on when MEA personnel are in the facility and when ambient lighting is not sufficient for them to perform their work. Both security main, and maintenance lighting will result in less than point one foot candles of light spill-over to the north, west, and south property lines, which is light level comparable to a quarter moon or darker. A maximum of 1.2 foot candles of light spill-over could occur on the east property line at Steffes Street, which is comparable to twilight. A recommended condition of approval, therefore, is for MEA to monitor lighting levels of the property lines post-construction and to make any adjustments necessary to ensure the light spill-over remains at or below the threshold stated in this section while still conforming to electrical safety standards. Criterion seven is met. Criterion six above that we just went through describes the impacts that the proposed facility could have on adjacent properties, and also includes information on how MEA plans to mitigate those impacts. The recommended condition is approval resulting from the consideration of those potential impacts will ensure that the facility does not create impacts beyond those anticipated by the project team. Criterion eight, this criterion is met. As discussed in criterion six, again, the proposed facility is unstaffed and will generate very little traffic, aside from routine maintenance personnel accessing the facility. Such low-traffic levels mean that dislocation on a local street is appropriate, will not negatively impact the transportation system. Finally, criterion nine, this criterion is also met. The proposed facility will not require more public services or facilities in the existing substation and will therefore continue to be located appropriately in relation to its needs. Steffes Street is located directly off Birchwood Loop Road in close proximity to the Glen Highway, so emergency vehicle access will continue, continue to be efficient. The applicant is also widening the turnaround at the end of Steffes Street to provide better access for vehicles. With that being said, the department recommends approval of the conditional use, subject to the conditions listed on page thirteen of the staff report. I will note, however, there was a typo in criterions, or, uh, stan, uh, condition number six. The first bullet point states zero to point zero zero one foot candles on the southwest and north property lines. That is actually zero to 0.1 foot candles on the southwest and north property lines. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. Uh, thank you for that report. Um, the department recommendations, one through six, and specifically four, um, four, five, and six, based on what I heard, I presume that these are conditions that have been placed based on public and feedback that's come in. Is that correct?
So-
The lighting, the mitigation, the noise, the vibration, the concerns raised by the public?
Through the chair, these, these issues have been raised by the public ever since the 2013, the initial 2013 application for conditional use of this site. Uh, the, these specific conditions are, are placed on this report in order to ensure that the, um, impacts of the facility remain within the mitigated range that MEA claims to, to have an effect for this site. Um, and, but yes, they did come, they did originally stem from, uh, public input.
So, as a result of the public input, you, you put some stipulations regarding, again, noise, vibration, and lighting. So, what happens if the petitioner fails to meet any one of these three criteria? They exceed the noise, they exceed the vibration, or they exceed the lighting, um, levels? What is, what kind of repercussions do we have other than, say, shame on you, you need to mitigate it?
Um, through the chair, I believe that conditional use permit would be tied, itself would be tied to these conditions. So, if the MEA failed to address any of the, the complaints and there were, um, impacts that ranged beyond what was anticipated in the report and the conditions, then the, the validity of the conditional use could be in question.
So, what, what happens then? Um, shame on you, get a slap on the hand? Send them a letter, say you need to fix this? Are we, are they going to be fined? Uh, again, it's the neighborhood, it's the neighbor and community that is impacted, and so, I'm trying to determine, I'm, I'm being blunt. Why fix it if there's no repercussions? Are we going to shut them down? Are we going to revoke it? After so many days of non-compliance of any one of these three, are we prepared to shut the site down?
Through the chair, that's, the exact enforcement method is not something I can answer right now, but if, if, I can say that a facility does not have a conditional use where the conditions are met, then that facility is not permitted under Title 21 to operate, uh, at that site.
Well, okay. Um, again, I'm, we, we've had situations with the, um, neighborhoods and so forth with other substations, um, in the Eagle River area, and we, we hear repeatedly from the, um, citizens and the neighbors and so forth regarding these- And we, we hear repeatedly from the, um, citizens and the neighbors and so forth regarding these substations. And I get, I get the "not my backyard" mentality, but again, we, we have to have certain requirements and we have certain needs and to facilitate here for MEA, I get that. But if we're going to put teeth, or if we're going to put stipulations and call them teeth in the conditions, I'm trying to ascertain how we're going to protect the neighborhood when and if, if these elements are, these conditions are not met. Now, there's different ways. We could fine them, we could put a penalty phase in there for every day that they fail to meet it and appease the neighborhood that way. We could make a bond, do a performance bond, specific to their performance, so that they meet or exceed, um, the requirements here, or, or don't meet the, um, negative requirements here. Um, but I'm, I'm trying to ascertain what the city is prepared to do to ensure that there's enforcement on these three approval conditions.
So, through the chair, I, again, I can't answer what exact, the extent of the enforcement methods that would come into effect in this situation. However, I can say that the, the mitigation efforts that MEA would put into staying within the, um, the ranges predicted in their, in their report would be the first quote-unquote "line of defense," if you will. And, uh, there are indications that, and MEA can speak more to this in their, their presentation, but
Okay.
Um, I believe that within the, staying within the ranges, given modern electrical equipment is, is very reasonable. Um, and there is an existing substation, a new, a newer substation, uh, on O'Malley Road that they've used to, to look at these, uh, these impact levels in terms of vibration, noise, and lighting. And so they do have a real-world example to go off of, and they, they do fully expect, I believe, the, the impacts to remain within those ranges.
Okay, I guess we'll wait to hear from the petitioner, um, what they expect to do. What, what, what I'm hoping I won't hear now or down the road is that they're willing to put in, well, we put in so many dollars to try to fix it, now it's just not cost-effective to try to get to those levels. That's not an acceptable answer, so I'm looking to see what the petitioner may be willing to offer up during their, um, presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, what's the status of the, um, uh, plating process to do the lot line adjustment?
Uh, so that plat has been approved.
It's already been approved?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no other questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
Hello, this is Julie Esti, can you all hear me?
Yes, you can, and, uh, please let us know if you'd like to reserve any time for rebuttal.
Yes, there will be time. My name is Julie Esti, I'm the Director of External Affairs and Strategic Initiatives through Matanuska Electric Association, and on the phone with me, there's a few others from MEA who'll be introduced later. I've been working with both the Birchwood and Chugiak communities on the Justin Park Substation upgrade since about two thousand fourteen, when I started with MEA. Um, MEA had just had our previous CUP denied for a few technical reasons, um, but frankly, it was denied because MEA didn't engage the community in an authentic and meaningful way. It was the first capital project MEA had done in decades, and we made some big mistakes that you will likely hear about, um, and during public testimony tonight. So, after I started, we decided to take a step back and start all over again in a more collaborative way. We knew two things, first, the substation had to be upgraded, the area and the power demand had grown. It's very old, and many of the parts aren't even replaceable anymore. In fact, the walls of the control enclosure have already been removed for asbestos mitigation, and the entire substation has to be turned off to make any repairs to keep our employees safe. Second thing we knew is that we had broken the trust of our members who lived in the area. So, we started by listening to them, and the biggest concern that we heard from them is they wanted it to be moved somewhere else. So, moving a substation is tricky, it's like moving your heart somewhere else in your body. It can function somewhere else, but it still has to remain connected to all the parts of your body that make it work. But we decided if the community wanted us to move it, we would see what our options were, so we conducted a vacant land search in the area, near or along the transmission line, and found two other potential parcels. We did a thorough analysis on both the financial and community impacts. The financial difference in moving it actually turned out to be negligible, but the impact to the community was much greater. And that's because we had to do considerable clearing throughout numerous residential parcels to bring all four distribution lines to the new substation location. So, the impact to people's property through a loss of screening and buffering was just too, too significant for us to feel comfortable moving forward with any of the other locations. So, after communicating this to both Chugiak, Chugiak and Birchwood Community Councils and impacted residents, we decided it was best interest of our members to move forward with an improved design on the existing location, which has been there for decades, since that was the site with the least impact to the community. Um, the existing substation size and configuration is not adequate to meet the, the needs, there are safety and continuity of service issues. MEA has involved our members in the process and made adjustments to the design to accommodate the community's feedback. The substation has to go somewhere, and so moving forward with a code-compliant expansion of the substation and the location that it has been for decades allows MEA to meet our obligations to provide electric service with the least impact to the community. We appreciate the Chugiak Community Council's resolution of support of the project, demonstrating its importance to them. I'll now pass it on to Juan Lee from R and M Consultants, who will provide more details on the project.
Hi, thank you, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, so, uh, through the chair, uh, my name is Juan Lee, it's spelled V-A-N-L-E, and I'm with R and M Consultants, representing MEA on this conditional use, uh, permit. Also on the line is Haley Stiles, she's the Project Manager for MEA, and also John Sinclair, who is MEA's Engineering Manager, in case the clinician has any questions for us. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank staff for the excellent overview and presentation of the technical merits of the project and how it meets Title twenty-one regulations. We agree with staff and the Plating Department's recommendations on page thirteen of the staff report, conditions one through six. Um, I'd like to save the remaining time for rebuttal, uh, five minutes if possible. Um, so, for my presentation, I'd actually like to share my screen here. Can everyone see my screen?
I believe so.
Okay, great, so, um, since Julie gave history and overview of the previous process and Colin did the technical and Title twenty components, I just want to speak, uh, briefly on the ways that MEA has gone above the code, the minimum code requirements to make this project better, to fit in with the community better, to improve the screening and aesthetics through landscaping, a twelve-foot, uh, wood-slatted truck fence that will screen the project until the landscaping has grown. So, what you have here is the site plan with the landscaping. So, Title twenty-one requires fifteen, minimum fifteen feet of landscaping, buffer landscaping, L-two. On this west side, the, we meet the minimums of fifteen, but on the south side, we're at thirty feet of landscaping, as well as on this east side next to Steffes Street. Up here, we also have fifteen feet. Title twenty-one requires half of the trees to be at least conifers. We're going with a hundred percent conifers because they have leaves all year round, so that the screening benefit can be there winter and summer. We, uh, acquired the adjacent property through the plating action to create more setbacks. So, Title twenty-one requires twenty-five feet of setback. We meet that on this west side and the north side, but on the south side, we have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty feet from the property line, and then on this west side, we have thirty feet. Um, and that's actually calculated from the fence line and not the actual equipment itself. The equipment itself is twenty feet interior to the fence enclosure, so we're setting back the project and exceeding Title twenty-one on all sides. With landscaping, as I mentioned before, the code requires eighty-seven trees and two-hundred-and-fifty-seven shrubs. The project is proposing a hundred-and-twenty-two trees, all conifers, and four-hundred-and-eighty-eight shrubs. We are also proposing, um, eight-feet trees at planting versus the code minimum of six feet. And this is to ensure, if you can see my screen, that at, one to, this is the current conditions here, so this is the proposed project. Um, in one to two years, even these eight-foot trees and the fence, they screen some, they have screening benefits, but in the long term, when they're mature, eight to ten years, they provide a much better screening option for, for the exterior of the project. This is existing, and then this is one to two years, and that mature. And I've got one more to show you here, so existing facility, and then in one to two years after planting and construction, and then when it's mature, these trees will grow, uh, forty, fifty feet tall to provide landscaping, buffering for the, for the residential area.
Thank you, unless you want to use some more of the time you reserved for rebuttal, that is your time limit.
That's five minutes? Did you read these out?
There are three minutes remaining for rebuttal, and so unless you would like to use
We would like to save the remaining time, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, and through the chair, um, a couple of questions. Are there additional secondary transformer lines or, um, um, I don't know what you call them, um, power lines that will be brought into the substation?
Through the chair, Haley or John, would you like to answer this question?
Hi, this is Haley, um, so there are currently three feeders, um, that are in the current, um, existing substation, and that will also be what we're going to have at the, um, proposed substation with the potential of a fourth feeder. Um, and those feeders are, um, underground right now, and the switch cabinets go underneath the Steffes Street and are in the, um, easement on the east side of the Steffes Street right now.
So, the, so the three feeders currently in the subdivision are underground, is that correct?
Um, well, so, existing right now, there's one feeder that's above ground and two underground, um, and then with the proposed, um, substation, they will all three be underground.
Okay, what about the fourth one that you have on the drawing board when you add a new transformer?
Yes, that fourth one will al- The fourth feeder will also be underground, there's currently existing along the, uh, Steffes Street, there's currently four, um, switch cabinets right now, and so those four cabinets will be able to, um, hold those four feeders.
Would it be acceptable as an additional condition to stipulate that any additional feeder lines by agreement would also have to be then placed underground?
Um, this is John Sinclair, um, with MEA, yes, that would be acceptable.
So, any new feeder line to be underground?
Yeah.
Okay. And, let's see, has there been any thought, because the neighboring view, and because you're talking about seventy-foot tall, forty-foot, I think, um, tall light pole and so forth, and you've got somewhat of an elevation for the site itself, has there been any thought, and I understand about drainage, to X-ing out and, and putting this facility or site, lowering it ten or fifteen feet in order to minimize the visual impact around?
Through the chair, Haley or John?
And, and I will follow, and I would stipulate that my question comes about because this came up in a previous conditional use where we were looking at water towers, or wider, water towers. Where that idea has come up where, um, because it was obtrusive height, they, they looked at options and we were, we've seen options where the water towers are partially, in this case, partially buried. But in your case with the site, could the site be lowered in order to mitigate the, um, concerns of the surrounding neighbors?
Yeah, this is John Sinclair again, um, so, when you lower a substation or any electrical facility, you tend to run into, uh, water issues. And specifically with the switchgear, um, water and switchgear, because it is underground, um, while the cable itself is good to go underground, the switchgear is not. So, it would raise some concerns with drainage, um, that would be difficult to address with significantly lowering the facility. And maintaining, you know, your electrical, um, you want to keep, water and electricity don't always work well, and inside the switchgear, that, some of that is open, in other words, not insulated. Um, there's also some other facilities there that don't do well with water, specifically inside the sub.
Well, while I understand your comment, I refer you to page four, where you refer to the O'Malley Road proposed substation and stipulate that yours is nearly identical to the proposed project, but that, to some degree, is exactly what they did.
They did, they X-ed out a hill, but they didn't lower the existing grade at the entrance to that substation. So, they took, they did take out on the, I can't remember what side, um, but on one of the sides, they took out a hill, um, a portion of the hill. Um, but then it became cost-prohibitive to do any further work into the hill.
They took out a significant portion of that hill, I drove by it every day. I lived in the, lived in, lived in the area at the time, um, and you'll note that on the eastern side of that, you'll see the immature trees in your photo as part of the hill that they actually added to in order to create that buffer. So, you'll look, so here, you're looking at a picture, looking down at the facility on O'Malley Road. So, I'm just pointing out, you want to use this as an example of what you're, you're going to build, yet that's exactly what they did here.
It, it is, that hill, um, was, you know, a decent amount of dirt that got moved. Um, I, I actually worked for Chugiak at the time, was the lead on that project, so I am pretty familiar with the work they did there. Um, that material was not, um, the same material that's here either, we actually have pretty good perk here. Um, they had, uh, additional requirements there, um, that required that, that hill, which was actually pretty soft material, that's why you got the retaining wall that's there, um, whereas
You're actually supporting my, you're actually supporting my position to a large degree, you realize that?
But the material there was different than the material here, I guess is my point.
Understand, so the technology exists, though, to place this down and do an X-fill, so it goes around. It's not cost-prohibitive, um, it's done every day, we just also, and actually, we just approved another one in section one of the first, a part of this commission meeting, where they're going to have the same issue, they're on a downward slope.
Right, but the
So, I guess, I
The material here is different than there, that was loose gravel, that was easy to excavate. Like, the hill that's existing to the, I believe it's south of this, is actually solid granite, and the material that's existing on-site, if we were to X down, they had good drainage, we would have nowhere to drain this material. They Xed out a hill, but the other side is where they actually put in a retainage pond that could handle that perk. If we dug this into a hole, we would have nowhere for that water to go, except for into the electrical facility. They had a side that they could drain it to.
Well, I understand this would have to be engineered, and you would take the engineers to come in here to identify a way, but I guess my question to you was, has that been looked at? And your comment is, it had, if I take from your words here, it has been looked at, but it was cost-prohibitive.
Right, if you start digging down, it starts getting pretty cost-prohibitive on this specific site. If you were digging into a hill that was loose gravel, that wouldn't be as cost-prohibitive as digging down here. Can, can it be done? I'm certain it can be done, but the economics make it very challenging.
Okay. So, with the seventy-foot tower and the forty-foot light pole, I'm just looking for a way that might lower those without, without still giving you the necessary height that you're looking for, but, um, it sounds like it's an all-or-nothing proposal, so I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, I have, um, a couple of questions. The first one is, I saw in the, um, comments from the Birchwood Community Council, there was a reference to, um, considering the lot adjacent to Three Bears. And I may have missed seeing a discussion, um, of that somewhere else in the packet, but I was wondering if you could speak briefly to the viability of that lot, and whether it was considered in the, um, in the relocation study?
Through the chair, Haley or John or Julie, did you want to answer the question about the relocation study?
This is Julie. I can speak to the initial study, the relocation study. At that point, that was not an available lot, not a vacant parcel that was available, so it was not conducted in that first study. Whether it's a viable lot or not, I will let John or Haley answer from a technical perspective.
So the Three Bears lot is, I believe, not, while we need about two, give or take, acres to fit the facility in, it's got to be somewhat of a square or rectangle-ish. So it's not just your acreage. It's because of the physical layout of the electrical infrastructure and the clearances we need around it, it's got to be in a specific shape. I mean, I say specific, triangles don't work well and depending on the circle, how big it is, they don't work well either for this electrical installation. So in addition to that, getting the facility transmission line feeders over there is also somewhat of a challenge. So we didn't do an extensive study, but looking at the property, the geometry of it does not work for the electrical infrastructure that we're proposing, if that makes sense.
Yes, that does. Thanks. And the next question, I was just wondering, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but that the O'Malley Substation maybe has been identified as kind of the most comparable to this one? And if that's the case, I'm curious whether any complaints have been received from the surrounding community with respect to vibrations or light or sound or anything else there?
So I'll take this one. They, after construction, I am not aware of any complaint from the surrounding neighborhood. During, before construction, there was feedback from adjacent neighbors who didn't want that particular substation to move forward. Afterwards, I'm not aware of complaints on lighting or vibration or noise.
Okay, thanks.
Year or so afterwards, so.
Thanks. And then my final question just relates to how the sound is measured and I saw that there was kind of an analysis that had been done and I think the sound is described as an hourly average of the decibels and it's not clear to me what that means. I guess, I'm not very familiar with what, kind of, how sound is measured and described for this purpose, but just to me on its face, the hourly average sounds like there could be peaks within that hour and I'm wondering if that is something that might be a concern if there, you know, the average is a certain level, but if there could be moments that could be anticipated or not that are higher than that?
So the way that that, there's an anti-standard for measuring sound, they actually go into a sound booth for the transformer. The transformer is what causes the noise in a substation. The rest of the equipment for the most part is pretty quiet or makes no sound, but the transformer does have a base noise level. It's very bassy. And that particular, the way that they measure the unit is they put it in a sound booth with microphones at about five feet all around it and they measure it at different load levels. And at the highest load level, typically the noise that you hear is not actually the transformer, it's the fans. Because we have fans that cool it because heating's an issue, so you have fans. And those fans typically are what make it loud. The actual transformer itself is actually not as loud as the fans associated with the transformer. And for this particular unit, when they did that, it met the requirement, the sixty-five dB at max capacity. And typically this transformer, most transformers in an electrical grid are at half or less capacity and the reason is so they can pick up adjacent substations in the event of an emergency. So you've got to realize what we're telling you guys is at full capacity, it will be sixty-five or less. And I would, hopefully ninety-plus percent of the time, we don't have any issues, so it'll actually be at half that. So that sixty-five is worst-case scenario and I believe it was with no fence, we will actually have a fence which will even make it less. And in addition to that, almost all the time, it'll actually be significantly less, I believe in the forty-four dB level. So most of the time, it'll be even quieter and that's mostly because the fans aren't running. You only need the fans to kick on when it's at a much higher capacity.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. I have a follow-up question. I'm really just trying to clarify the grading and this is to follow up the questions that Commissioner Strike had a few minutes ago. Just reviewing the staff packet and the site grading plan, it appears that the, of course, there's a good-sized hill on the south side of the parcel and then it drops off even lower on the north side of the property. So it appears that the whole site plan is like a balancing between those two hills and with a big kind of flat plateau and matching the grade of the Steffle Street. Am I interpreting that site plan correctly?
Yes, there is a hill on the south side and it's about ten feet higher than what the substation site will be. And it's ten feet high in about like a fifteen-foot area. So it definitely elevates pretty quickly.
What's not clear, I guess, is the current elevation of the current substation. How does that compare to the new elevation of the proposed site? Is it going to be raised or lowered? And I understand that the, some of the complaints I heard from the community council members were that there have recently been some grade changes out there. Did they lower or did they add material?
So the existing and the new, there'll be slight elevation increase, but not much. That it's pretty much going to be a pad that's the same as the existing. You're not going to notice and it'll meet up with Steffi Street as well. So that's about the elevation. We, in the, on the, what side is that? The west side will have some fill that will need to come in because that actually drops down, it's actually lower between the house and the substation on the west side. So there'll be some fill on that side, but the rest of it is about what's existing out there is about what is proposed. So there won't be noticeable change, at least at the substation itself. There will be drainage swales on the sides to handle and perk. The water is needed, but the actual elevation inside the substation is going to be about the same as the existing. I mean, within a foot. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it's not planned to have raises.
So has there been recent work to build this level plateau out there for the proposed site?
With the original conditional use, that was a while ago. That was not recent. Yeah, thank you. It was not recent, like this year or last year. It was a while ago.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Just to follow up on Mr. Looney's comment too and the statement that was just made. I believe if I recall the last time you were before this commission, if I got this right, you'd actually started work prior to receiving a conditional use permit and that was the work I believe that you're referring to and it was done prior.
Correct.
Yeah. So moving forward here, the department has six recommendations with six conditions to the recommendation. And conditions number four, five and six all carry elements of monitoring and based on noise, vibration and light. And as we heard earlier, these were put forth to address concerns from the neighborhood. And as this has been a contentious, evolving project for all parties involved and trying to ensure that the neighborhood is to some degree protected and that the petitioner, the proverbial doing what they say they'll do, what type of requirements might you propose to put forth in the event you fail to meet on either of these conditions four, five or six?
So a couple of comments on that. One, kind of how I was describing the transformer, that sixty-five dB rating, which is a requirement, that would be at max capacity and that was without the fence. So we've designed this substation with a lot of margin in it to make sure we never hit those. I can't perceive, I mean, I could be wrong. I mean, it could happen and if it does, we do, MEA doesn't intend to address it because we are not going to go past those limits. But we've designed it so that it would, I'm not going to say impossible because anything can happen, but it'd be really, really hard for that transformer to ever have a sixty-five dB rating that goes beyond the property line. I mean, it just, it doesn't operate that way. Now transformers as they age do get louder. That's taken into consideration. When we did the analysis, there was no fence. The fence is going to be twelve feet, so it's significant noise dampening. That's one example of how I just don't see us, we put so much margin in this that we would ever be over that threshold. And we do plan to monitor it and provide feedback and if it is self-policing, but in addition to that, I just, if that transformer goes over sixty-five beyond the property line, there's probably something wrong with the transformer and we would have to address it anyway from a maintenance standpoint because it isn't operating correctly. So that's kind of the safety margin we put in there to ensure lighting, vibration and the actual transformer noise level is at or below, should be significantly below what is put, been brought forward here as conditions.
But as you stipulated before, it's not the generator, it's not the transformer that makes the noise, it's the fan.
Right. So we'd want to fix that too. We don't want a rogue fan to cause the radiator to get a leak. So if those things are, the bearings or whatever is not right, we'd want to know actually. Hopefully someone will monitor it. If someone hears it, they call in and let us know so that we can go out there and address it.
So again, my question is, what type of requirements might, would be acceptable to you, knowing what you know about how you're designing, operating and operating the site, that you're going to be well below these three criterias? What do we tell the neighborhood that you're willing to step up and do if you exceed these levels? It sounds like you have all the confidence in the world that's being designed that you'll never exceed these levels, at least for the noise. Therefore, for every day that you, for every day that you don't meet one of these criterias, you're willing to be fined?
Well, again, if a fan goes rogue on us, we'd want to have time to fix this.
Okay. So what would you propose? I'm trying to appease the neighborhood to show them that you're going to do what you say you're going to do.
And that makes sense. I'm just trying to think of what would work because we would want time to address the issue.
Absolutely.
Because our intention is to meet those.
But what we've done in the past, what this particular commission in the assembly before you today has not done, but commissions in the previous have done, they put performance bond requirements in place.
Through the chair, this is Wammy. I have a follow-up question just to clarify Commissioner Strike's request. What was required of this CEA substation on O'Malley Road that we mentioned there as a comparable station? Was there monitoring for light, noise and vibration? Was there a performance bond imposed on that substation?
Right now, that case is not before us, so I'm not prepared to discuss that case.
And then through the chair, I'd like to just provide additional input on John Sinclair's comments. As a team, we discussed earlier about monitoring. This substation obviously is not staffed, but it is maintained regularly because it's required for National Electrical Safety Code compliance as well as ensuring that reliable power is being sent to the members in the area that the substation serves, twenty-one hundred members. So MEA was prepared to provide readings to meet the conditions four to six. Every time the station is patrolled, maintained, requires site on staff and a reading can be taken and documented. Also, as I'm aware of municipal enforcement for land use regulations, it is based on a complaint basis, so it would require a complaint to be filed with municipality for follow-up with code enforcement. And so there is no proactive approach, but MEA is, is, is willing to meet the conditions four to six to monitor and document readings.
I didn't hear the word mitigate.
And we would mitigate if we didn't meet those. Our intention is to meet those.
But these conditions are in place to address the concerns of the neighborhood. They've gone so specific to meet and compromise to get to this stage and now I'm hearing that MEA is willing to stipulate what they'll do, but they're not willing to back it up?
I don't think we said that. We would be willing to look at all...
How are you going to back it up?
I have no problem backing it up depending on what that backup is. I guess that's my, you know...
And I posed the question to MEA, what might you be amiable to, to be collaborative, to move this process along? But this is a touchy question in the fact that I'm giving you guys the opportunity to identify what you're willing to do and you're arguing that we don't have to do anything. Our requirement's met by monitoring and mitigating.
We can definitely look at...
My problem is there's no teeth to the conditions. The conditions are, the conditions therefore become nearly irrelevant and it becomes lip service. I'm trying to put some teeth into the conditions.
Right. No, and that makes sense. I definitely see your viewpoint. I just don't know what MEA would be willing to do as far as you mentioned a bond or some other type of condition, which makes sense. I understand where you're coming from and I mean, from MEA's perspective, as far as the engineering, I'm fairly confident stuff goes wrong and we'd like time to fix it if it does go wrong. So I'm not too worried, but I would like time to discuss it. We weren't thinking that we'd put a bond up for this particular one, but you know, I'm not saying that's not feasible. I get what you're saying and that's definitely, you know, a reasonable, you know, you want to make sure that this happens. We're saying it happens, but you want some teeth in it. And I get that and I understand that and I appreciate that.
And I'm trying to allow the public in the neighborhood to understand that we hear them for the second time. We understand their concerns. We're trying to minimize and mitigate these concerns to see a project through. You've spent the time and effort to work with the community, work with the neighborhood, redrawn the lines so to speak, and then you're committing to doing what number four, five and six are doing as conditions, but don't hold us to it. That's what I'm hearing. That's what comes across.
All right. I'm going to jump in here for a moment. I believe the question has been asked and answered that it would be municipal, done by municipal code enforcement through regular procedures. Also for clarification, I believe we have Mr. Hodges in the queue.
And I would pose that that was not the answer. And I would pose that that was not the answer to the question that was asked.
Mr. Hodges?
Thank you. So, the conditional use would, if there are conditions around a met, would be, could potentially be nullified, which is a regulatory enforcement mechanism. So, the conditions that are on the staff report would be in the resolution for approval if the commission so desired. That would have teeth, so to speak. That would be, you know, the conditions do mean something in that sense. And I will raise that the, so I mentioned that the previous conditional use for this site was denied in 2014. MEA, I believe that MEA did appeal that to the Board of Adjustment, and I'm not aware of any similar facilities that have performance bonds or escrows imposed upon them. And that issue did come up at the Board of Adjustment hearing, and the language in that Board of Adjustment hearing does suggest that had an escrow fund been required of the facility, and I'm not sure how that would really relate to a performance bond, but had that financial kind of guarantee or backing been required, then they may have been considered to have been treated differently than applicants in similar situations. So, I would just like to clarify that I don't know of any, I'm not aware of any bonds or escrows that would be, have been applied to sites of this nature. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike, did you have additional questions?
No, thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I do have a few questions myself. One, I believe it was stated that it would take approximately eight to ten years for the current trees to mature. Has there been any plan by the petitioner to retain any of the mature trees that are currently on and surrounding the lot?
True the Chair, yes. So, I didn't get to that part of my presentation, but the existing natural vegetation on the south side of the property that's going to be retained is almost ten thousand square feet. It is ninety-eight hundred ninety-three square feet. Title twenty-one requires forty-five hundred square feet to be retained.
All right. And then, another question. What is the current height of the pole structures that are on the current station, and what is the new proposed height?
True the Chair, Haley, did you want to answer that question?
Yeah, so the existing transmission getaways is about forty to forty-five feet tall. And then, the tallest structures will be four seventy-foot transmission getaways along Steffi Street, and that'll connect into a existing transmission line, the Acclutino Transmission Line, that is about two hundred feet east of the proposed substation. And on the Acclutino Transmission Line, in that area, the poles are ranging from eighty-five to ninety feet tall. So, the structures, the tallest structures on the substation site will be twenty feet shorter. And then, towards the residential area, towards the west, will be fifty-one feet as the tallest structure.
All right, thank you. Are there any other additional questions for the petitioner before we move to public comment? Seeing no additional questions in the queue, can we get our first public testimony on the line?
You've got questions on the queue?
Hello?
Hi, is this Valerie Davies?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony for case twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-six-nine.
Yes.
Are you calling as an individual or representative of a group?
An individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin. And Valerie, before we begin, if you could mute anything that you have in the background?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and you can begin.
My name is Valerie Davies, and I live just behind the proposed property and slightly catty corner to it. I carefully chose my home because of the quiet neighborhood and the rural, like, characteristics. That is being no sidewalks, no streetlights, things like that. We enjoy that kind of neighborhood. I really do not want this expansion in my backyard. It's a commercial-sized expansion in a residential area. It simply does not belong here. I oppose to having the lights on thirty-five-foot poles in my backyard. I oppose to having sixty-five decibel humming noises in my backyard in the quiet of the winter when the leaves are all gone off the trees and there's snow. It's dead silent out here. I don't want to hear that. MEA speaks of the trees helping to mitigate that sound when they're fully mature, but what am I supposed to do for the next eight to ten years to listen to that sound? I don't think that's fair. I also oppose to the risk of possible well contamination due to an increased amount of chemicals and substances in that area close to my home. If my well gets contaminated, what am I supposed to do? You can't uncontaminate that. I'm also concerned about health effects of living in such close proximity to a substation of this magnitude. They speak of other substations comparable in size, but they're not in comparable close proximity to homes as this one is. Also, those other substations are on larger lots than this one is, and so, it's just not in such close proximity to people's homes. So, I don't find that to be comparable. I'm okay with them replacing existing equipment. I'm just not on board with the expansion of the footprint to six times the size that it currently is now, and that would just simply diminish my property value, and I find that to be completely unfair. They need to find somewhere else to put it where there's not already homes so people buying know what they're buying into. But I already purchased my home, not having a substation of that magnitude behind it. I just don't want it here. So, I strongly urge you to deny this permit. Thank you.
Before we disconnect, I have a question for Ms. Davies. I wanted to ask you about the current conditions of the property. Do you currently have any concerns with the current noise level of the property or current light level of the current station that is there?
No.
So, as a follow-up, if we were to guarantee that the current noise level and light would be similar to what is there now, you would, your concerns over noise and light would not be the main concerns, but it would be primarily visual and related to water, is that correct?
Correct. Health effects and water concerns.
All right.
Since they're expanding the property closer to my property by pushing it back, it's just going to get closer and closer because of the size of it. I don't see how you could guarantee a mitigation of that noise. But I would agree with the commissioner who was speaking previously and saying that putting some kind of bond or something so they could possibly compensate us or fix the problem, or guarantee fix, would be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Davies. Seeing no other questions in the queue, thank you for your time. Can we get our next speaker on the line?
This is Brent.
Hi, Brent, this is Carly, or the Planning and Zoning Commission, calling for your public testimony for case twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-six-nine.
Yep.
Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
An individual.
Okay. If you could please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Yep. My name is Brent Davies, and I'm calling concerning to not build this expansion. It does not stay the same as far as the site is concerned. The, does not stay the same as far as the residential criteria that it has maintained now. Our lifestyle is unique out here, and it doesn't belong there. And according to the AMC Code fifteen dash seventy, Table One, in an R six residential neighborhood, excuse me, the noise is the, that is the table for noise. And in the municipality of Anchorage, you have to maintain a sixty dB A from seven AM to ten PM. Now, from ten PM to seven AM, we're supposed to go down to fifty dB A. At the property line, according to MEA, on the west portion of the property, it's supposed to be at fifty-nine point one-one. Currently, at the Steffes Street, now, the existing one, is at forty-nine point two and forty-six point nine at a hundred feet from the actual existing one. Why are we going up in sound if we're putting in better equipment? This is new technology. This thing's multiple years old. Now, I have been getting all of my information from MEA, so I've been emailing them directly, right back and forth, so that's where I've been getting my information from. And on the noise, they emailed me back that we could be at sixty-five dB A, dB A, excuse me, for an hour on repairs. That was a response to my actual concern of noise when I addressed it to them, not the fact that it's going to be sixty dB A. And that's at the mature state. Other areas, all throughout the whole property, it's above fifty dB A, even all throughout during the night. Just for you as an example, my property line is a hundred and sixty feet from their property line. And when I talk at my garage, my neighbor's garage right next to me is over two hundred feet away, and I can hear every word of that conversation, just to kind of put that in perspective. So, if you think that we're not going to hear that fifty-nine point eleven dB A, that is totally, totally, totally not acceptable, in my opinion. Why is it getting louder? Because they want to provide more power to other areas. Now, I agree also with the third-party inspector, something to maintain some sort of enforcement of why they can build this. Now, also back to the.
Mr. Davies? Mr. Davies, I'm sorry, I have to cut you off. Your three minutes is up, and I don't see any questions in the queue.
Okay.
So, that is your time.
Okay.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Can we get our next testimony on the line?
The digit zero or one is. Hello?
Hi, is this Debbie Oceander?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony for case twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-six-nine.
Yes.
I understand you're calling for the Birchwood Community Council?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you'll have five minutes to provide your public testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
My name is Debbie Oceander. I'm currently serving as Chair at Birchwood Community Council. This topic has dominated our council meetings for the last few months. The meeting in February, the meeting in March was all about this, and we didn't get a point where we could actually take a position until last week, when the council voted fifteen to two to not, to urge that this be turned down. The discussions that we have had over the past few months in the community council center on several areas. One of them is, I think it's necessary to rebut, in some sense, what staff position on compliance with the Chugiyak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan Zero-Six update. That comp plan, several places, talks about how important it is to preserve rural lifestyles in specific low-density areas. Birchwood being identified as one of those areas. I specifically can tell you Policy Three L on page, and page thirty-five, page thirty-six, page thirty-seven, and page thirty-eight talk about the importance of that and how important it is to integrate, in particular, utility location to safeguard those protections. Birchwood is a unique residential neighborhood. It's primarily CER six. It's large lot, very rural area, heavily treed. It's small, single-family homes on these lots. The impact of this is dramatic in that it, the clearcutting of the lot caused so many phone calls and concerns just alone because it's so atypical of the neighborhood. The quiet and heavily treed area is integral to Birchwood. A lot of the discussion we heard talked about impact for property values. People believe, and were able to provide us proof, that property values decrease when you're next to utility substation. We had a lot of discussion about drainage impact. There is a hill and a creek on the south side of this, and everybody out here depends on wells. We are outside of the AWU service area, and it is essential to us to maintain protection for our water levels. There was discussion about lighting impact. There was discussion about sound and vibration, but so much of the discussion and fear is about the visual impact of this on a heavily treed residential area. We're talking about a footprint that's six hundred percent bigger than the current substation. We believed and talked extensively about inadequate buffering and setbacks. CER R six requires a, now for homes, a fifty-foot residential setback in the rear. This particular situation, they're calling the west side not the rear of the lot, even though anyone driving up to it and looking at the area thinks that, would think that it would be, and they only have a twenty-five foot. The buffering is inadequate, we believe, and the setbacks are inadequate. I could give you a lot of detail if there's any specific questions to some of the concerns that have come up in the last four months about this property.
Commissioner Strike, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, True the Chair, and thank you, Ms. Oceander, for testifying. One of the questions I have is that earlier testimony from the petitioner is that they did extensive and continuous and new reach-out to the community councils. When that reach-out occurred to the Birchwood Community Council, did, or was it referenced that alternative sites had been identified but rejected?
There were two alternative sites that were presented to us. Originally, we had requested that there be an extensive look at alternative sites. That was described to us, and the feedback from the council was, well, please, please, look at the Three Bear site. We were, have been, we've heard nothing about the result of that look if it occurred. Just now, listening to your testimony, was the first I was aware of that. So, yes, there was a strong request, look someplace else. We agree that we need reliable power. We just think this location, right next to people's houses, is not the right one for such a big facility.
And the reason I'm posing the question to you as a council, for the Birchwood Council, is that, is my understanding through the testimony that two alternative sites were identified, and that while the cost was not significantly higher or parallel to the existing cost, that they were rejected due to the, and I think I get this right, the right-of-way or the clearing that would take away from the buffer zones of the properties that were identified. But I'm looking for if that conversation took place with your community council. But I'm, I'm looking for if that conversation took place with your community council. And as I understand it, two of the three current lines into the existing substation are underground now anyway. So, uh-
The, the turning down those additional sites was not done through any kind of interactive discussion with the council. It was done entirely by MEA.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question as well. Um, I do know that there was a, another intended meeting that was supposed to happen, um, but it was canceled due to COVID nineteen. Was there any reach-out by the petitioner to work with the community council, um, remotely to try to cover some of those issues that were still left remaining?
Ms. Estee did contact me and said that she would be glad to help. She didn't specify what help that would be exactly. We went through a two-week period thinking we could design some kind of an online survey where we could reach out to our members to get more specifics and do some sort of voting. That effort failed. Our technical skills were not good enough. So, as a result, because there was such intense desire to do something, we called this Zoom meeting last week. And we're able to get only seventeen people on board. Typically, meetings on this topic generate a bigger turnout than that.
And as a follow-up question to that, was the petitioner also present at that meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
When I said seventeen votes, there were seventeen people who voted. There were more people, MEA, I think, had four people online. Or three, I'm not sure.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, uh, for the community council representative? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic-
Hi, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission, calling for either Karen or Rod Perry's public testimony.
Yes, this is Karen Perry.
Okay.
And I live on White, and I live on White Birch Road.
Real quick, Karen, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. Uh, go ahead and provide your name for the testament, or for the record, and you can begin.
Okay, please don't start my timing until I'm done spelling my name. Uh, Karen Perry, P E R R Y.
Go ahead.
Okay, sad to say, neighbors here feel very marginalized and bullied by MEA. Once again, we have put our lives on hold to fight against this proposed massive intrusion into what is supposed to be a heavily wooded, rural, and quiet R six area. It is disturbing that we find ourselves before this board on this issue for the fourth time. This project has previously been denied three times by this commission, and now the proposal is even worse than ever. The towers are taller, even more property has been appropriated. Water seepage potentially could pollute our wells and septic with no guarantees. What if something goes wrong? MEA'd, MEA just admitted as much that it could. What about substation yards that are regularly maintained by using a variety of herbicides? All which could leach into our wells. Once a well has been polluted, there is no fix, none. The size and scope of this project belongs where city water is available and wells are not at risk. We agree our community needs electricity. We don't mind, and a good compromise would be the modernization of our current substation if it is kept to a comparable size. This project simply does not, once again, with no previous CUP issued, the acreage is now twice the original size, but the project has grown by six times as large. Now they replanted even more property to try and literally force it in. This project is not compatible with existing and planned uses in our neighborhood. There are other lots available. And I would suggest MEA look at the property that they have already purchased in Powder Ridge, just a few miles away, that could be used for this project, and it is already appropriately zoned CE PCB for planned community development, and is sixty-eight thousand plus square feet larger. A proper size for this mammoth project. A station built now in Powder Ridge would encourage development in that undeveloped area and still be able to provide power to the surrounding communities. This would be a real plan to promote the growth and expansion. There has been little public outreach despite MEA's claim. A letter they declared to have mailed in July of twenty nineteen was not received by me or any of the neighbors that I talked to. Our Birchwood Council continually vehemently rejects this project in the past and continues to overwhelmingly disapprove it. This project might make MEA jobs more convenient but is not necessary to put here. And it does not protect us as per the city ordinances. In conclusion, our wells and septic are potentially at risk. There will be light pollution that cannot be mitigated. The noise exceeds the ordinances and our forever home property values will plummet. We strongly oppose this project. Please vote no on this CUP, and I am willing to take questions.
All right, thank you for your time. We can go ahead and hear from the next-
And Karen, I understand we have Rod. Would you like us to call back, or could you pass the phone to him?
I will ask, are you ready? Yeah, and he would like his five minutes as an expert in his field, is that an, as an option?
I'm sorry, no, it is not. We only, uh, offer it for those who are members of representing organizations.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Rod Perry, P E R R Y. Um, one of the adjoining landowners. As a former forestry major, uh, who has worked in forestry, I, uh, would like to address, uh, something that jumps out at me, several weaknesses and doomed to failure of, uh, MEA's planned tree buff, uh, tree buffer to hide, um, the unsightliness of the substation. Uh, first, MEA's, uh, plans for spruce to be an effective buffer, uh, takes a long time to grow. By one testimony of their own, twenty years to reach what they deem acceptable shielding. Uh, the recent thing I heard of ten years is ridiculous. That's, uh, small Christmas tree size. Reflecting, um, by the way, I, I'll be age ninety-seven. Uh, second, uh, that shielding at best would only hide the view from ground level and from close up. Uh, it would not hide the upper part of the structures, only, uh, on the ground level. Step-backaways, the industrial structure would tower over the trees, same from second-story windows. Third, it's common for spruce to grow up scraggly, hiding nothing like around the substation at Lake Otis and O'Malley. Fourth, to hide the view even at ground level, the trees would need to be planted several rows deep, row offsetting row, backing up one another. MEA's buffer on two sides would only allow for a row or two, not nearly enough. And they would have to be planted thickly. To get them to grow bushy enough to provide a visual barrier would take limb-by-limb culturing like is performed on Christmas trees. Trees growing thickly enough to form an effective barrier when young will, as they age, uh, self-prune. They'll form a dense, closed upper canopy that shades out bottom limbs, which die and drop off. The unsightly substation would then come into view through the bare trunks. Fifth, trees die. MEA's planned tree barrier would always be at risk. Bark beetles don't, uh, usually kill young vigorous trees. However, bark beetles are not the only spruce killers. There's an example of defoliator work going on right now among the young spruce along the highway between Eagle River Walmart and the Bricks Bridge. Let's focus on the northwest corner of ME, MEA's property. Uh, the buffering plan is thinnest, right there where it needs to be thickest. Going to the significant, already very evident, heavy drainage off that corner, MEA admits it will be so wet, spruce is unlikely to survive. That poses a severe problem. MEA's planned buffer strip right there is so narrow in width, only mere, a mere fifteen feet. There's room for maybe only a single or double row of trees. Buffer would be thin right where they need the thickest buffer because right across the fence dwells the most heavily impacted neighbor. Scrambling for a solution-
Mr. Perry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt you. Um, you've reached your three minutes of a lot of testimony time.
Thank you.
I did have one question before you leave. Um, given your expertise in this area, did you, uh, work with MEA to try to, um, discuss, uh, additional buffer plans that might be more suitable?
No, they say they were wanting to be more cooperative with the neighborhood, more interactive, more transparent. No one has ever, ever approached us at all.
And did you voice any of your concerns about screening at the community council meeting and about choosing different, um, uh, plant and buffering?
We're, we're the Birchwood Community Council. And, uh, at the close of that meeting, the Chair stated, "We have a lot of work that'd be, be done. We need to come back next month and work on it." And then the COVID thing hit, we've been shut down.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're way behind the curve on this. And we feel like we have been given virtually no chance.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Seeing no other questions in the queue, I think we can move on to our next public testimony.
Hello?
Hi, is this Dan?
Yes.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission, calling for your public testimony on case twenty twenty dash zero zero six nine.
Yes.
Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could please state your name for the record, you may begin.
Okay, hello, my name is Dan Juswinski. I live on the property adjacent to the new proposed Park Substation. My house is less than a hundred feet from the northwest corner of this proposed station. One of the main reasons we purchased this property is zoning regulation, for which we believed would protect us. At the time, there was a lot, a full lot and a house between me and the existing substation. So my wife and I spent our life savings on this property and spent the next couple of years saving enough money for a bank loan to build our house. Then MEA bought the lot between us, tore down the house, and clear-cut all the trees. And started, uh, construction on a new station before they even got a permit. A station many times bigger than the existing station. Thankfully, this commission had the wisdom to vote down this proposal in two thousand fourteen, a station that was just too big. Now here we are again, and MEA is proposing to build a even bigger station. One that will be several times bigger than the existing one. One that is primarily for the benefit of the surrounding town, not the community that it would reside in. This station is much too big for this zoned area and not necessary. One, one of similar size to the current station would still be enough to service the area. The station, by their own estimates, will be in violation of the noise ordinance. At fifty-nine point eleven decibels on the northwest corner, less than a hundred feet from my house, twenty-four hours a day, non-stop, that's barely under the limit during the day, but over the fifty-decibel limit at night. A steady noise that will not only decimate my property value, but will ruin the quiet and solitude of this rural, rural area. The only contact of MEA with the people most directly impacted by this station was on March eleventh, P, or, at the, uh, Birchwood Council meeting. They would not give a response to why there was only a fifteen-foot buffer on the north and west side. This being the noisiest corner of the project and closest to the existing houses, but have a thirty-foot buffer on the other two sides. They messaged a containment system for all of the stormwater, to hold it until it can be absorbed into the ground. What is the impact of this poor saturation on the stability of the soil or the surrounding area? There is no insurance policy or mechanism to protect the adjacent landowners. If the drainage plan fails to work, what happens to our wells, our septic systems, or even flooding of my house? I appeal to this commission, please maintain the integrity of the zoning plan for Birchwood. This project is incompatible with the existing and planned land uses in the surrounding neighborhood and will have a devastating effect on the affected landowners. Please disapprove this application. And I can take any questions.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no questions in the queue, I think we can move on to our next, uh, public statement.
Hello?
Hi, is this Laura Suarez?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission, calling for your public testimony for case twenty twenty dash zero zero six nine.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you providing testimony as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Okay, if you could state your name for the record, you can begin. And you'll have three, you'll have three minutes for your public testimony.
Thank you. Um, my name is Laura Suarez. And from the very beginning of when this project started years ago, the, MEA has downplayed the size of the project. If they could contain a modernization on the original small equipment footprint, keeping it in the original corner of the property away from other homeowners on White Birch Road, and without the proposed seventy-foot towers, that is what the neighborhood originally agreed to back in two thousand and twelve. We have no problem with an honest-to-goodness upgrade, it's needed. But with modern technology, MEA should easily be able to maximize the current equipment footprint with newer, efficient equipment. They shouldn't have to expand the current footprint at all. This is the wrong location for an expansive facility, big enough to serve communities, far, far-reaching from what they've done before. And someone mentioned before that the Three Bears lot wouldn't easily work and it needs to be perfectly square or perfectly rectangle. Um, and it would take some work to make it work over there. You couldn't take this project and perfectly plop it over there, you'd have to redesign it, but it could absolutely work. This degree of industrialization does not fit the spirit of our rural wooded area. And within the Anchorage Bowl, the Birchwood area has been zoned to protect the uniqueness of this rural area. Um, we really count on you zoning commissioners to be our best protectors. This proposed expansive development would really overwhelm and dominate the landscape and damage our neighborhood's sense of well-being. And, again, we have no problem with small-scale upgrades to help our surrounding neighbors, help ourselves with the upgrades that are needed. But to completely tank our property values, both aesthetically and monetarily, with a project of this magnitude is very concerning to us. Um, personally, our lot is the kitty-corner lot up the hill from MEA's lot. And no amount of thirty-foot fencing or trees at full maturity at twenty, thirty feet, twenty, thirty years from now, is going to, um, mitigate the massive industrial pollution, especially when the trees in our yard lose their leaves come fall. We're gonna have lights shining right into our properties. Their previous premature tree clearing in two thousand and twelve has already inflicted a wound on our wooded area. And if they're now allowed to go ahead with this structure, what they've already ruined will never hold a candle to our truly ruined location, location, location. My husband and I moved here from Seattle specifically to this Birchwood area to escape massive industry in our backyard. And backing up what Commissioner Strike had said, you know, planning and zoning back in two thousand and fourteen suggested an insurance policy or an escrow account or funds to cover damage in case MEA's drainage plan didn't work to protect our wells. Now, in two thousand and twenty, there's no contingency plan that would be continual and binding for the life of the substation. We would like to see at least a plan that would always keep replacing, protecting the neighbors, replacing the dead and dying and fragile trees. Yes.
I'm gonna have to interrupt you there, your time is up.
All right, thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Um, I do not see any additional questions in the queue, so I believe we'll be moving on to our last, uh, public testimony.
Thank you, please vote no.
Hello?
Hi, is this Luke Suarez?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission, calling for your public testimony on case twenty twenty dash zero zero six nine.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
Yeah, I'm calling as an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
Okay, so my name is Luke Suarez. So my wife and I moved here, my wife just spoke to you guys, from Seattle, and this is my wife's childhood neighborhood. And we wanted to move back here to get away from the large cities, all the lights, all the noise. The reason I'm concerned about this project is because the current substation is six times smaller than the proposed new substation. And I guess I'm wondering why the idea of putting such a large substation in a residential area would make any sense with all the noise, the light pollution. You know, we, our property is adjacent to the MEA's property where they're wanting to develop on. And so for us, you know, it is going to impact us. You know, people in the future, you know, you want to sell property or whatever, you know, you've got a big substation, you know, a big power station right next to you. It's going to impact, you know, people wanting to buy property in the wintertime or fall in the wintertime. You know, you're going to have no trees, I mean, excuse me, no foliage on the trees, and, you know, the snow. So the light is going to reflect. And, you know, you're going to see that in the wintertime. You know, we're on the south side, and we're directly next to the property, you know, right, you know, we're the property right across. So, you know, this is kind of a big concern to me. I got another concern of listening to Mr. Strike is, you know, it doesn't seem like MEA has any, like, they're not going to take any responsibility if their equipment is too bright or if it's too loud. Which is really concerning to me because there needs to be something in place, you know, like some kind of fine or some kind of repercussion if they overdevelop. I mean, you know, you see that in any other type of lot, anywhere, like, you know, if you do something you're not supposed to do, you get a fine for it, you know. So, to me, it would make sense that they should have some kind of agreement with the locals of the neighborhood. You know, being that the majority of the direct locals don't want this. I was on the Birtwood Community Council meeting. I was in that meeting. I was one of the 15 who voted no against the two who voted yes. So, nobody here really wants it. So I'm really wondering what they're going to do, the MEA is going to do, should they overdevelop. Like, who's going to hold them responsible? Like, will they pay a fine or fee of some kind? You know, how are they going to satisfy the local community? What's going to hold them accountable? What's going to entice them to protect, you know, the local community and to uphold their end of the bargain? So I just wanted to voice that concern and ask that you guys please vote no on this, considering that there's really nobody going to hold them accountable.
Mr. Suarez, sorry to interrupt, but that is your time?
Okay.
Thank you for your testimony. I don't see any questions currently in the queue. But I would like to thank you for your testimony.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Just double checking, am I correct that that is all of our public testimony for tonight?
That is correct.
All right, moving on. Petitioner, I believe you have three minutes remaining for rebuttal. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Through the chair, this is Juan Lee, and Haley Thiel and I are both going to provide additional information for clarity. Just want to say actually first, thank you to the Birtwood Community Council. They have a whole section on their Birtwood site that is just dedicated to this project, all the materials, handouts. Additional information that we provided has been posted on there, and they've coordinated with Julie since 2014. And she went back there November 18th to November 14th of 2018 to let the community council know that the project was restarting. So there's been a lot of communication, and we really appreciate Birtwood's working with MEA on this project, whether or not they agree with it. But we hopefully tried to address all the issues that were brought up, including screening, buffering, aesthetics to the extent possible. We want to also say that we, you know, we made a really concerted effort to mail a second mail out to let people know how they can testify with instructions for tonight. So just trying to make sure that the project's very transparent and open and welcomes the feedback. Haley, did you want to add something about the sound?
Yeah, so I, after the March 11th public meeting, I went up to the current Park Substation, and that transformer is a 10-MVA transformer. And at that time, it had 3-MVA load, and I took the noise level at about 170 feet away, and it measured about 42.9 decibels. I went up to another MEA substation, hostile substation, it's in the Matu area, and that has a 20-MVA transformer that is the size of the transformer that we are proposing. So, and that also had 6.4-MVA load, so double the load. And 100 feet away, it was 46.3 decibels. So with the 20-MVA transformer that we're proposing, with twice as much load as what was out there at the Park Substation, it was 3.4 decibels louder.
And this is John. I would also like to comment that our new proposed substation has secondary oil containment, whereas the existing, because of the time that it was built, did not have secondary oil containment. So as far as water contamination concerns, it actually will have secondary containment to prevent the transformer oil from spilling. So there are measures now, in the standards now, that are higher level for everything we're building, including secondary oil containment.
All right, there is eight seconds remaining. I'm assuming based on silence that that is the time. We do have a commissioner from, with questions, Commissioner Krishna.
Yeah, I have a question for the petitioner. Could you tell us if this project was not approved, what impact that would have on MEA's ability to provide electric service to the area?
So the existing infrastructure there is pushing 50 years old. It's not quite that old, it's 47, I think. And it is at the end of its useful life. The replacement parts are difficult to obtain right now. It's not impossible. So an upgrade is necessary to maintain reliability in that area. That is why we have come to you guys to request this upgrade. It's just an older substation at the end of its useful life. So it is going to continue to degrade and get less and less reliable until we replace it, and it's going to be more and more difficult to fix it until we replace it.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you. And through the chair. And follow on to Commissioner Krishna's question. If not approved, would you look at one of the other alternative sites that previously mentioned?
We would need to find some way to serve that load. It is, the existing substation is definitely at the end of its useful life. So we cannot do nothing and continue to serve those members. So it is an issue we would revamp and look at what is necessary to get service to these members. And anything we have, I shouldn't say anything, but we would really look at what we'd have to do in order to do, in order to provide them service. Because it has concern with the older subs.
And on a follow-up question to the noise level, and this came about from a different project that we reviewed many years ago. And the question is, what month of the year did you do the measurement for the noise? And the reason I'm asking that question is, in the valleys, in the wintertime, we noted that the same piece of equipment operating where it was, the distance that the noise could be heard changed in the winter months.
And that's a good question. Oh, go ahead, Haley.
Oh, I was going to just say that I, so I did the study March 17th. So it was definitely at lower loads. In this area, the Park Substation area, the peak load, which is in the winter, is about 7-MVA. And that is about what hostile substation was, which I was comparing it to, which was 6.4-MVA. So it is, peak load is at the wintertime.
And my reasoning for asking that is, on a cold 10-degree night, noise does travel differently. And so the impact to the neighbors may be different feasibly.
Right.
And what Haley was saying is that it's the same as a winter night. She measured a substation that had more load on it, the trade-in equivalent to the winter nights. You're correct. There's more load during the winter, and the transformers get louder.
And this is also a follow-up question to the earlier petitioner's testimony on the alternative sites that were reviewed, but ultimately rejected, even though the cost was near the same. And am I to understand, do I recall correctly, that it was the, not the buffer zone, but the clear cutting that would take place on these sites to bring the lines in was one of the deterring factors of why that approach, one of these alternative sites was not chosen?
Yes, this is Julie SD. And that actual analysis is in your packets for reference. But, yeah, so what the real impact was, the site was was near some houses, but not as close, the actual substation. But the distribution lines, which are what brings the power from the substation to your homes or businesses, there's three existing feeders and one planned feeder. And so bringing those distribution lines down to that substation from where they are existing, there would need to be 30-feet easements down several dozens of properties to get there. And so those 30-foot easements would significantly impact the view, buffering, and just property values of those homes.
But to clarify, those 30-foot easements exist currently, do they not?
They wouldn't exist to the new substation location. So they exist currently where they have existed for decades. But if we have to move the substation, those distribution lines all have to go to that substation. So we would need additional distribution lines where they don't currently exist to connect the current feeders to that new location.
I understand, but they go in an easement. The easement on those properties already exist? That's a question.
Not typically.
So you've checked it out because you looked at the feasibility for the cost analysis, which you indicated was a neutral cost analysis?
The cost analysis did not include, it was strictly from my memory, and I wasn't, I was on more of the member-related side of this, not the detailed analysis side of this study. But was the site preparation, the civil and technical work of the actual site. The community impact was where each property was analyzed for the easement that it would require and the impact to the home on that site, and each one was given a number on view, buffering, and there was a couple other factors as well. And then those numbers were basically aggregated for both projects, all three site locations.
The transmission lines that you refer, three currently, four anticipated, that would go into a alternative site. At the current site, those are underground. Two of the three are underground. And in the alternative site, this presumption would be, they would also be underground. So any disruption to the easement side would be temporary, because as you note, the trees grow up to full maturity, or near about eight years.
And we still need to maintain easements, even when they're underground, because we can't have vegetation growing down into the lines. So even underground lines need maintenance. And many of the lines are, some of the lines are still above ground in that area, but...
And to clarify, you have distribution feeders, and those will, in this plan, all of those will go underground. But the transmission that feeds the substation, that transmission line would remain overhead. So you have distribution feeders, but that transmission line, which requires an even larger easement, which currently does not exist, that actually feeds the high side of that substation, those are overhead facilities. And to new substation, if there's another substation, that's a significant easement to be put, depending on the situation, it's like there's a little more, because it's the higher voltage and the larger pole gathered in main overhead permanently.
The testimony we heard from the call-in, folks giving testimony, seemed to indicate that the only reach-out that they're familiar with went directly to the community councils and not directly to the local or neighboring homeowners. Was there a separate distinct reach-out by MEA, other than the mailings and how they could testify? Was there any reach-out by MEA to the local adjoining neighbors?
So Juan can probably speak to this more clearly. Aside from the community council, we worked directly with one of the, with the most directly impacted landowner. And then we also sent out additional mail-outs for both our public meeting and this meeting, and Juan can probably speak to that most effectively.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. This is Juan through the chair. So, as I mentioned earlier, Julie did go to the community council November 14th of 2018 to talk about the restart of the project. The Birtwood Community Council, as Debbie O'Sander mentioned earlier, is really the clearinghouse for all projects and information in the area, so that's usually the good place to start. But MEA, through R&amp;M, directly sent the letter to 22 residents last July, July 3rd, 2019. We did not receive any letters back, so we know they were received by all the residents, letting them know that the project was starting again. I had sent that letter actually to the planning department as just kind of backup that we did do that due diligence. And we talked about the previous project and how that failed, and also provided call numbers for anyone to reach out directly to us, and we did get one or two calls. So we know that that letter was received and effective. Prior, so we did go to the community council again in February, and that was in our official public meeting, but we got on the agenda just to talk to the community council, let residents know the project is moving through the process. We are having a public meeting. We sent out mailers and flyers to 3,000 feet within the project area. Title 21 requires 500 feet. So we mailed to over 448 for that first mailer, had the public meeting in March. The meeting summaries are up on the community council's website. We did have some residents saying that they didn't know we were there, but there's a very good summary by the community council that we are there, as well as in your packets. And then we did send a second mailer that wasn't required by Title 21, just to ensure that. And it was something that we said we would do for the residents. In addition to what the planning department would send out notifying residents of the public hearing, MEA sent a second mailer through R&amp;M, providing instructions, the meeting date for tonight's hearing, meeting instructions, because we've got a different situation right now with COVID, and so clear directions on how to testify by phone, how to send comments in as well.
And just to add to that, and I spoke with Debbie O'Sander a few times just to connect back in, because we had committed to the community council to come back and speak with them. So she and I, I followed up with her two or three times to say, "How can we do this with the community?" I offered to do Zoom meetings. I offered to do one-on-one meetings. We offered to provide assistance with the survey that they were trying to create. So it was definitely something that was a priority for us, and we followed the lead of Debbie and the other leadership on the council as to how to do that. The other thing I think we don't want to overlook is the Chugiak Community Council. While this is, the substation is in the Birtwood Community Council's area, one of the feeders goes and feeds the Chugiak Community Council, and they were also kept up to date on the project and had the opportunity to be invited to the public meeting. I went to their community council, invited them to the public meeting. They did pass a resolution to support the CUP application, which is also in the packet. So we've been working with both community councils for several years on this.
And I understand working with the community council, and while they may be living in the neighborhood, it was the testimony that we were hearing this evening that, in my words, the community councils are not the in my, in my, my words, the community councils are not the neighbors, it's the neighbors. And all the neighbors that testified tonight, um, seemed to indicate they had not had any direct one-on-one reach-out direct, although they did assert, they did indicate they received the letter. Um, as part of that testimony, one of the respondents indicated that this project and they, their term was six times larger, um, than the current project. I didn't hear anything in your rebuttal to rebut that statement.
Haley or John, do you guys want to handle that question?
Um, yeah, so it is, uh, six times larger right now. The existing substation, um, inside the fence, which is MEA personnel restricted only, is about 7,800 square feet. And the proposed substation would be, um, inside the fence would be 40,000 square feet. So it is about six times bigger, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully I'm not butting into someone else that wanted to go from the queue, but I don't see anyone else in. Um, Commissioner Strike just commented on an area, and Commissioner Krishna commented on an area that I think needs a, um, hasn't been fully addressed in regards to that, um, expansion. You say it's a six-times expansion. However, um, when talking about why this electricity was nee-, uh, why the station was needed, it was because it is currently out of date and that you said it was in need of an upgrade. However, what I see in front of me isn't merely an upgrade, it's an expansion. Is there a reason that an expansion is needed and has a simple upgrade been looked into?
So to touch base on that, the current feed-in is a single feed. The proposed will be two feeds in. So as far as electrical reliability, it will be enhanced both for the immediate area and for the adjacent areas. Uh, it'll provide both redundancy and isolation if there's a fault, if one of the lines fails. Um, it will provide redundancy through, um, those two lines. So it is an upgrade to the transmission in because it'll have two. Instead of a single tap-in, there'll be two stands instead of one. It will provide, again, reliability, not just to that neighborhood, but to the larger community as a whole as well. It'll impact or increase reliability to the Eagle River area and it'll increase reliability north, um, to the Eklundno region and further north. So it is both increased reliability to that area and to the surrounding region.
And just to put a finer point on that, this is Julie SD. For instance, during the earthquake, um, the Pipple Substation, which serves the core downtown Eagle River area, sustained some pretty significant damage. And we were able to serve a large portion of that load through, um, parts of the Park Substation among with, along with other adjacent substations. So part of our reliability standards are to be able to back up the adjacent substations, which serve some critical loads. Um, this also, this is a substation that serves, um, the Chugiak Elementary and the Birchwood Senior Center. Um, it's also backing up several other critical loads as well. So we're looking at the immediate needs of the substation and then also the needs of the surrounding area.
And to that, I'll just add that we heard a lot of testimony from the residents that they run well in septic. And if you're on well in septic, you, unless you have a backup generator, uh, that can power you until electricity's up and running after an event such as an earthquake, you are reliant on electricity to power your pump, uh, your lift stations potentially for your septic system. So I feel like the day-to-day needs are pretty critical with having this redundancy and backup that John and Julie both talked about.
Um, I know that there's been different site analysis based on different locations that would work and the feasibility of that. Was one of the options that was considered trying to upgrade the current station to a similar footprint?
So the existing, um, code requirements such as oil containment would prevent us from using the exact same footprint because oil containment, for example, requires a larger area because we have to contain oil in the event of a leak. Just the pads themselves have to get larger. You also have seismic requirements. So it would be, uh, it would not be feasible to go exactly on the existing site just due to the current code requirements? How small could you possibly feasibly get it? We did not do a detailed analysis on how small, but I know just oil containment alone and the seismic requirements that are currently required, even with pile-driven, it, it increases the size. Um, but what really increases the size on this specific one is the redundancy on the transmission line for both this area and for the region.
And then another question I had is, I understand that, uh, the current height of the poles is around 40 to 45 feet, and that's now estimated to go up to 70 feet. Is there any way to reduce the height of some of those poles so it won't cause as much visual obstruction to the surrounding properties?
So one of the reasons that the pole height is, um, at 70 is, uh, shield wire for lightning. This was not in the existing design and it was not an MEA standard historically because we didn't get nearly as much lightning historically. Um, in recent years, we have seen the lightning activity increase significantly. And that has resulted in us putting in taller structures. And a lightning shield, it's basically a wire that hangs up there that allows lightning to hit the wire and go down to the ground, doing no damage instead of, uh, doing damage to our facility. So that, um, is probably 10 to 15 feet of that increased height is to have that shield wire for lightning, which is new. Um, and was there recommendation based on our, um, recent, in the last couple of years, events that we've had?
Thank you. Um, one further question I had is, um, or I guess maybe two further questions, is just moving on to the other concerns that community members have. One was the lighting that would be affected. Um, can you talk about the difference in how the neighborhood, neighbors would be affected by the current lighting versus the upgraded lighting?
Haley, did you want to add?
Yeah, this is Haley. Um, so there is, there is lighting at the current, um, existing substation. Um, it is minimal. Um, so the proposed, um, site would have two stages of lighting. So it would have a security lighting. Um, and that's just having two lights, um, and the light will be, uh, on 30-foot poles, um, and they'll be pointed inward. Um, and they are, so the security will have two and that'll be just one at, um, each gate. Um, and that's just so we can have, um, easy access and be able to safely enter into the substation and get to the equipment. Um, the other, um, lighting would be maintenance and that will be, um, if there's an event or if there's an outage and we need to work on equipment, and then, um, all the lights would be on.
And just as a follow-up there, is there any reason why the security lighting couldn't be lower so that it'd be easier, easier obstructed from the neighbors?
So just to highlight, the security lighting is, um, fairly dim. Um, and I don't remember the exact foot candles, but, um, it's pretty dark. That security lighting is basically enough light so someone can come up to the sub and unlock a padlock and then have at least one foot candle, which is pretty dark because I've been in substations with just the security lighting. Um, it's enough so you don't stumble over, uh, foundations or drive over foundations, um, when you're going to the switchgear to turn on the main light. Um, one foot candle at foot level, at ground level is pretty dim. I think they cited it as, uh, a quarter moon light. So that's what they're going to see, um, which I, I'm not sure the existing substation's foot candles, but it's pretty dim. Um, and if you look at, um, some of the example subs, like Haynes Substation, it's a dim sub. It's not well-lit with that security lighting. It is literally enough so that you, you can see your way to, um, turn on the main light.
So for clarification, it is about, it is comparable to the light that is currently at the station?
I haven't actually seen it, the current light. Maybe Haley has looked at it. I mean, it, it's too light. And I'm thinking the existing sub has too light, but I could be wrong.
And then my final question, um, is regard to the noise. Um, can you give us an average decibel rating for both the current station and then the new station?
So, um, that was the study that I, um, went out after. Um, it was in March 17th. Um, so it was when there was a little bit less load. But at 3 MVA load and at 170 feet away, it was 42.9 decibels. Um, and then when I did the, um, in another substation that we have, um, that is a little bit closer to the load that Park Substation would see at peak, which would be in the wintertime, um, which it was at 6.4 MVA load. Um, and I measured that at 100 feet away and it was 46.3. So the, it was 3.4 decibels louder, um, um, with twice as much load as what the substation had at that time in March.
So it's about going to be the same as the existing, would be my guess.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the petitioner? Seeing no other questions for the petitioner, what is the will of the body? Commissioner Anderson, would you like to state your motion for the record?
Uh, for case 2020-0069, conditional use for utility substation in the Chugiak Eagle River R6 district, I move to approve the request, um, along with the recommendations on page 13.
Uh, Commissioner Looney, can I take your, oh, that is a second, seconded by Commissioner Looney. Uh, Commissioner Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, sure. I, I won't be supporting, uh, the motion. Um, I think a few of the criteria for approval, I have a hard time finding being met specifically. Um, criteria two, um, I don't find that the character of the neighborhood can be maintained. Um, criteria five and six have to do with neighborhood compatibility and, um, fitting in with the character of the existing neighborhood. Uh, kind of in general, I think that, uh, it's an established rural neighborhood and the size and scale of the proposed substation is substantial enough, um, that it would detract and, and, and change the, the character. And I don't find that those criteria are met. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yes. Uh, I guess, um, I will be supporting the, um, the, um, motion as, as stated. And I, I know that, I, I definitely, um, took to heart all the testimony we got from the test, from the public. Um, but I do see that the petitioner went to a pretty good, um, process, the, the public process, I thought that was outlined pretty well in, in the packet. Uh, that in the last year and a half or so, they, they have restarted this, this effort. And it looks like they went, um, above and beyond what they need to do as far as outreach. And when it comes to the actual impacts or, or fit in, into the, to the, uh, neighborhood community, I think they've done a rugged job of, of addressing drainage, noise, vibration, lighting, and visual impacts. Um, so I, where I feel that , uh, there's, there will be more impacts in, in some of these categories, but this, uh, this facility's been here for, um, quite a few years. Um, and so I realize that, um, nobody wants this thing in the backyard, but it does seem like one of the better places to put it, kind of thing. So that's, that's the direction I'm going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Looney. Um, apologies to Mr. Hodges. I have no idea how long you've been in the queue.
Oh, just a few minutes. Um, I, this is just a quick reminder that depending on the will, the will of the commission, there is a, a typo in the foot candles bullet point on the conditions. And that's, I had mentioned that in the staff report, but just wanted to make sure that that, it should, uh, should be 0.1. And that's just a reminder. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. And through the chair, um, I'm going to counter Commissioner Looney's comments, um, regarding how this facility has been there for a number of years and counter to say this facility has not been there for a number of years. The facility that's being proposed is six times the current site operation. And it's a, and it's being put placed in the middle of a, middle of a residential neighborhood, whereas the comparing facility to O'Malley Road, the O'Malley Road Substation, is adjacent to a neighboring facility, a neighbor, neighborhood. Um, and it's fronted with a five-lane, um, state-maintained road with a speed limit of 45, 50 miles an hour. Um, and that's the, because that's the substation they want us to compare it to. So all you have to do is take a look at the picture. I will not be supporting this. As you take a look at the picture at the O'Malley Substation and see that planted in the middle of a residential neighbor, rural neighborhood, and it flies in the face of, um, reasonableness, especially meeting the, um, criteria five and six as addressed by Commissioner, um, um, Seth. I may be commented on that. Thank you, Jared. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Um, I think I, I think I probably also, um, will not be supporting the motion and really for the, the reasons that Commissioner Anderson and Strike, um, referenced, that in general, I, I just, I don't think I can come around to saying that, um, it's compatible with, um, the adjacent areas and uses in the area. I think I'm comfortable with most of the, of the concerns that were identified, that they have been addressed. Um, specifically the, the noise, um, doesn't seem to be, um, different in any significant way from the current use. Vibration is minimal. Traffic, um, I think the lighting is pretty minimal. Um, and I know there are concerns about contamination, um, but I think the secondary containment is significant. But, um, more generally, I think it's kind of just visual and the size of, of the, um, proposed facility, um, just doesn't seem to fit with the area. And I'm, I'm not, although I do recognize and appreciate the efforts to mitigate some of the visual impact, um, I'm not convinced that, um, those trees, even in however many years it takes for them to mature, will be, will be sufficient in that regard. Um, I'm also mindful of the fact that, you know, this does need to go, um, somewhere. And I don't know if the answer is finding some alternative way to address, um, the, the visual impact of this, um, or some of the other sites that have been considered, find a way to make them work. I know some efforts have been done in that regard. But, um, just looking at the approval criteria here, I, I don't think I'm able to come around to finding that they are satisfied for this location.
Chiming in myself, um, I did find this to be a very tough case. Um, a lot of the times when we get utilities, no one wants the utility in their backyard. And so we can't just think about how it impacts one person, but where is this best suitable form? Have to look at the approval criteria very specifically. Um, getting to this case, however, um, I am inclined to not approve this motion echoing Commissioner Gardner's, uh, comments, primarily just because of the visual impacts. And I don't feel that it is consistent with the neighborhood. Um, I was- the neighborhood. Um, I was initially inclined to potentially move for a postponement to see if, um, the petitioner could work closer with the community to work out some sort of agreement, because at this point, um, it appears that there really is not much difference between the noise of the current station and the new proposed one. There's not much difference between the light of the current station, the light of the new station. There's not much of a difference between, perhaps even better chances of containing water pollution and providing better well protections, um, with this new station. Um, so I saw a lot of positives in this application. Um, I like the increase that MEA tried to do in reaching out to the public. Unfortunately, I think it didn't quite hit the mark. I think there could have been greater collaboration with the community to get support for this and to try to work out some agreements, but I'm not at a position where I can, um, propose suggestions or amendments that I think I would satisfactorily make the, reduce the visual impacts enough in this area to make it compatible with the neighborhood. Um, I think there's, there could have been potential in this area, but as currently proposed in the application, I just don't, um, see compatibility with the current residential neighborhood and enough reduction in visual impacts that this would cause. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before we move for a vote? Uh, Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, um, it, this is a tough case, but the, what I see in the aerials is this site is completely cleared, and the proposed site does have a lot of improvements that I think will benefit the neighborhood. And this infrastructure is critical to the neighborhood and surrounding areas, and I think it has to go somewhere. And so, even though it is pretty tough, I think I'll support the motion.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, I, I guess I just have a question, um, for staff. We went through an exercise, maybe in our last meeting, where we were debating whether, um, a, a motion that, that failed, whether it would be with prejudice or not, and I'm, given the, the kinda narrow nature of, of my concerns, um, with this, I would like to try to keep open the option of a, you know, revision that, that makes some effort to address those, those impacts at least, um, without having to wait a requisite period of a year, two years, or whatever it would be. So, um, if that's just as simple as having commissioners stay with their vote, whether it's with prejudice or not, should this not pass, then, um, I guess my question is, if that's something that we can, we can do here.
Mr. Hodges, do you have any comments on whether there could be options for postponement or for, um, denial without prejudice and, or denial with prejudice, and how all those options maybe affect the current application?
So, a denial without prejudice would also indicate to a future application that there, they felt, that the commission felt at the time that with an improved application, uh, there could be a successful application. Um, so that, I believe that would have to be in the motion. And, uh, for postponement, then it would just be postponed or delayed until the next, the next commission meeting.
Um, as far as clarifying how it would have to be in the, in the motion itself, because we have to state our motions in the affirmative, I don't think that would be possible. Would there be any objection to if it is denied, there being a subsequent motion on whether it's denied with or without prejudice? We kind of ran into this one last time, and we ended up doing our vote and stating on the record how we were voting, but I don't think it allowed us to fully suss out that issue, so I'm just trying to find a better way for us to handle it this time.
You know, I'm actually not certain. Um, I believe that, that if it can't be in the motion, then in findings, or maybe a, um, an addendum, or a, uh, amended amendment to the motion, perhaps?
All right. Um, my, um, I guess what I'm gonna recommend, unless there's objections, and this will always be up for debate, um, but I would recommend that we move forward with our motion as stated, and if there is a denial, there will be a subsequent, um, vote on whether or not it is denied, uh, with prejudice. Um, Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yes, so this is probably a question to the other commissioners as much as anything else, but, um, if, it appears that the, the concerns, and they're valid concerns that the community has, you know, of, um, drainage, and noise, and vibration, and lighting, most of those have been addressed, but the, the one that I hear that has, has the biggest intention is the visual impact, or the, um, just doesn't fit because of the, yeah, the visual impact. Is there anything we can do, you know, a, a, um, amendment, I guess, to the motion that would, um, would mitigate that, that, uh, rather than 12-foot fence, a 20-foot fence, I don't know, or twice as many, um, trees in the buffer, or thicker buffer, or something like that, that, that would, um, that could, could make this thing work, I guess. Um, I'm just trying, I'm reaching for a solution. If, if, if this is not gonna work, rather than just no, is there a way to modify it so it will work?
Um, I'm gonna move on to, people can chime in and comment on that. I, I have a response myself, but just to honor the queue, I'm gonna move on to Commissioner Anderson.
Um, yeah, I think that, uh, in regards to the chair's, um, idea to have a second vote on with prejudice, with prejudice or without, if it's denied, I agree with that approach. I did wanna add that, um, like, my reservation, similar to, um, Commissioner Gardner's, is, is the visual impact, and I think it mostly comes down to the size of the foot, the footprint of the, um, improvements in relation to the footprint of the property, and especially, um, the setbacks from the street and the north property line. Uh, I think the south property line has sufficient distance away. Um, the west property line is limited, but, um, MEA has control of the property to the west, so they could mitigate the impact on that west property, um, or they have the ability to. And on the north property line, uh, you know, there's not a lot of space. Looking at, uh, images from the area, it's mostly a deciduous forest, so in the wintertime, the leaves aren't there to do any shielding. Um, and the vegetation that they're proposing on the north property line is, I think, a tamarack, which is a deciduous conifer, um, which wouldn't offer any protection in the wintertime either. So I think mostly it comes down to the, the size of the lot that they're working with is, is not large enough to, to do adequate shielding, um, for the size of the proposed project.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Um, to jump back in the queue myself, and in response to Commissioner Looney, I would say at this time, I'm not prepared to make an amendment to the petition, because I, um, wouldn't know how to properly address the concerns, and that is one of the ways in which I feel the petition is failing. Um, of course, I'm, if other people wish to make such motions, that is their choice, but just to respond to your question, um, would anyone else wish to make a comment or have a question at this time, or speak to the underlying motion that we have? Oh, Mr. Hodges, are you back in the queue? Mr. Hodges?
Yes, I apologize for, I gave some incorrect information. Uh, the, so without prejudice only applies to rezonings. Uh, it does not apply to conditional use. I had a chance to look in, in the code, and it does not mention without prejudice, uh, um, an opportunity for that in the conditional use section, so that is not available now.
So as a follow-up question, if this is denied, um, and the petitioner, how long would the petitioner have to come back to, um, address this similarly, or would a postponement be the only option for that?
Um, I don't know that there's a, a time restriction on that. Uh, I'll take a closer look. Let me, give me one.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have a comment from Comis, Commissioner Winchester.
Yeah, I'll keep it quick. I'm currently in support of the, uh, motion as proposed. Uh, it's gonna give improved reliability to redundancy of transmission, improve safety of MEA workers, improve service to the area, and I think that the, uh, the petitioner has, uh, made, uh, adequate steps to, uh, to fit in the, uh, the local area.
Thank you, Commissioner Winchester. Um, I'm gonna give Mr. Hodges a few more minutes to research this area in a bit, which is good timing, because I have to go to the bathroom, and I'm not on Zoom and can't go whenever I want. Um, so I'm gonna call a brief, 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 uh, break, but we'll be back very soon. And I'm back, and so restarting the meeting back up. Um, just before we move on to the next person in the queue, I wanna check with Mr. Hodges. Um, do you have any more information, or?
Yes, uh, so typically, uh, denial would mean they can't come back for one year.
Okay.
And so postponement would be the only option for them to come back within the year.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Uh, Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, I'd like to move to postpone.
Is there a second? Uh, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Uh, Commissioner Spinelli, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I, I just think that a lot of work has gone into this, um, and I would hope that maybe we could come back with some additional conditions that might satisfy the commission and put this behind us, rather than waiting a year. And that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. Uh, Commissioner Krishna, would you still like to comment at this time?
Yeah, thank you. I think I'm the only one who hasn't, uh, spoken yet on this, and I, I wanna echo what many of the other commissioners have said, which is that I really did feel like this was a strong application, that the petitioner, um, did substantial work to address, um, the issues brought up by neighbors, specifically on lighting and noise, um, and, and went to great detail in doing so. I, um, you know, also wanna acknowledge that this is a critical piece of infrastructure for, for, you know, that we need service for in this area. Um, I agree that the scale makes it just very difficult to reconcile, especially since it's at the end of a residential street and not really in, um, any sort of transitional area. Um, I am not, uh, in, in support of it at this point, at this point, because of the large amount of concerns voiced by residential neighbors and the, the sort of incompatibility, especially given that it's gonna be six times as big. But, I do feel like there are additional options that we could explore, and I would, you know, hope the petitioner would explore better, um, especially in, in, you know, maybe separating out the, uh, upgrades to this facility, and maybe the expansion and redundant services that need to be provided for other areas. Um, so, that was a lot of comments, but, uh, thank you. At this point, I, I won't be supporting it, but do support the motion postponed, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. I would just like to, oh, sorry, Commissioner Strike?
Thank you, and to the chair. Um, and I appreciate all the comments and so forth that have come in. This has been a long process and deliberative, but I would like to remind one of the commissioners who spoke to how the land was cleared, and it's already open to the site area, just hasn't, construction hasn't been built, and remind the commission that that work began prior to a cup had ever been brought forth to this commission. So the petitioner actually started the work a little early, so I wouldn't give credit the fact that it's an open, open site currently. In fact, consideration should be made that if this ultimately is not approved, that they restore the site back to its original condition. But, the area that I'm back to is middle of a residential neighborhood. There are alternative sites available, without, without any significant pursuant to the petitioner's comment, without any significant cost increase.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Hodges, are you back in the queue? Is that an old one?
Oh, that was an old one, I'm sorry.
Um, I guess I have one more question, since it looks like we're going to vote on the postponement. Do we need to specifically state a postponed date, or is that something that, um, planning staff can work out in our absence?
Um, we can, planning staff can work that out with the petitioner.
All right, thank you. Um, seeing no one else in the queue, uh, we will now be voting on the motion to postpone at a date to be determined by planning staff. Call for a vote.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes?
Chair Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
No.
Mr. Looney?
Yes?
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes?
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. Um, this item will now be postponed, uh, at a later date to be determined, um, by the planning staff in collaboration with the petitioner. Um, I hope both the petitioner and members of the public, um, listen to some of the comments that we had here. Um, I believe that public, uh, testimony in this has been closed, if, um, so there won't be a time for additional comments to us. Um, so if members of the public are still on the line and listening, this is a good opportunity for you to reach back out to the petitioner and work with them, as well as planning staff. Uh, Commissioner Strike, is your comment a new comment, or is this, um, an old one? I can't, I'm having a hard time keeping up with the queue.
I'm sorry, that's an old comment.
Okay, no, it's, um, I believe that takes us through our regular scheduled agenda. Um, since Commissioner Strike was speaking, I'm assuming I can count on him for our next motion.
I'll move.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Seeing no objections, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. That was not easy. I appreciate your time.